Hello, I suppose it's seven, that's.
Seven twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
We're just confirming the live stream at this minute.
Let me know when you're ready to go.
We will. Thank you. Just one sec.
So, yeah, we're just checking. Mike should be hot, but there goes. We do have live audio.
Great. About thirty seconds before seven-thirty.
And while we wait.
Cindy, are you ready to go?
I'm good to go. And I was gonna let the mayor know, since it's a work session, I'll do your meeting notice and do roll call when you're ready.
All right. So it's seven-thirty. Are we ready to go now, Celeste?
I believe we are ready.
All right. Well, welcome to the Monday, May sixteenth, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are joined with our buyer friends from the Housing Commission, and we want to welcome you, and we're delighted that you are able to join us this evening. Ms. Masterson, would you like to read the meeting announcement or meeting notice and then call roll, please?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. The meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section two-point-two dash three-seven-zero-eight-point-two, as well as state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operations during the COVID-nineteen declared emergency. All participating members of City Council and other boards will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and members of the public can view the meeting at www.fallschurchba.gov/councilmeetings, as well as on FCC TV, Cox Station eleven, RCN two, and Verizon thirty-five. City Council work sessions are conducted to allow for council meetings to discuss, council members to discuss upcoming legislation and policy issues. The public is not generally invited to speak. Public comment may be sent to cityclerk@falschurchba.gov, and all comments are provided in full to the members of council and will be summarized at the next regular city council meeting. And for roll call, Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Leon?
Here.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor.
And Cindy, Dana may want to also call the role for the Housing Commission. I believe we may have four members present.
Sure.
All right. Let's go ahead and do that.
Well, I believe we have two, but for the Housing Commission, Joshua Shakur?
Here.
Meredith Anderson?
I believe she just hopped on.
Meredith?
Here. I just joined.
Those are the only two commissioners. The others are speakers related to the Amazon Two.
Ah, thank you, Dana. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and welcome to our Housing Commission friends. We appreciate the fine work you all do and for taking the time to join us this evening. Unless there's any other preliminary matters, why don't we go ahead? Is there anything you want to say, Josh, before we get started, or should we go ahead and just get on with the NHP agreement?
I think we should just go ahead and jump in and.
Okay.
And so while we're discussing the program.
That sounds great. Well, listen, Dana, are you going to be handling this matter for staff, making the staff presentation?
Actually, Alicia Garcia, who's our new housing development specialist, will be making the presentation, but I'll do a brief overview.
All right. Well, thank you so much, and welcome to Alicia, which is her turn. But go ahead, Ms. Lewis.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So we are here tonight to talk about the Amazon Two Reach Year Two Grant, which is two pieces. It's the homeownership project and also the extension of the teacher workforce unit covenants. But with the first project that we'll be doing is the homeownership project. This agreement that we are asking you to give us feedback and comments on this evening is the, will govern the relationship for the administration of three-point-four million affordable homeownership program in the city. And our goal is to take that input that we received this evening and bring back a developer's agreement for you to authorize the city manager to execute on next Monday. And with that, I will have Alicia Garcia, who is our new housing development specialist, give the presentation. She's excellent. She's been doing a great job since she's been here. We're really happy to have her.
Great. Thank you so much, and welcome to you, Ms. Garcia.
Yeah. Hi. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the introduction, Dana. My name is Alicia Garcia. I'm the housing development specialist here. Tonight, we're going to talk about the Amazon Year Two Virginia Housing Reach Grant in the aspect of the homeownership program. So if we could advance to the next slide, please, to provide you all a little bit of context, Virginia Housing awarded the City of Falls Church a grant in the amount of three-point-seven-five million. Some of this money will be going to the REED building to extend the affordability covenant on the units there for an additional ten years as those covenants are expiring. The rest of the funding, which is three-point-four million dollars, will be going towards this homeownership program. That funding was awarded in February of two thousand and twenty-one. One year later, almost to date, council received an initial development agreement between the City of Falls Church and the NHP Foundation, who is our development partner for this project. That is just an initial review, and I do want to note that it is still under legal review and has edits to go as we receive insight tonight and have received additional insight from the city attorney. The following week in February, council approved the Virginia Housing Grant Agreement, to which we entered into in April of two thousand and twenty-two with Virginia Housing. I do want to note there is a grant deadline of December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, where we need to expend the funds provided by Virginia Housing. So tonight, again, we're talking about the three-point-four million that has been allotted for this homeownership program to cover subsidy for affordable housing homeownership opportunities for residents of Falls Church and to cover administration fees. We anticipate up to eighteen homeownership opportunities for individuals and families. We say up to eighteen, as I'm sure everybody on this call knows that prices are escalating, whether it's housing costs now, fees for any type of rehabilitation work that needs to take place, and as interest rates rise. We anticipate to do up to eighteen. However, we are accounting for these increasing in pricing. Every home that is a part of this program will have a restrictive covenant on to the property, which will state that the home is to remain affordable for ninety-nine years and that the upcoming buyers need to meet the appropriate income limits for that home. When the buyer will eventually sell the home or perhaps refinance the home, we anticipate doing something called an eighty-twenty split. This split means that eighty percent of the funds earned through sales will go to the homeowner. That will allow them to create wealth opportunities while also paying off their current loan, and twenty percent of that fee earned will go to the housing program to recycle the funds and create a revolving loan, our revolving grant fund for this program. This will allow us to assist more potential homeowners in the long run. Some key terms and takeaway, as I mentioned, that this is for affordable, low-income and moderate-income families. So we'll be anticipating to serve anyone who's in the area of median income between fifty percent of AMI and one hundred and twenty percent of AMI. The homes will be sold at a price that is affordable to those different income limits, ranging in price from two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand nine hundred to five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Here, we're asking you all to provide us your feedback, so we may get an approved development agreement at the next meeting on May twenty-third. Once we have that approved development agreement and have entered into the contract with NHP, we anticipate to start right away, which will involve HHS staff reaching out to residents, some of which who are already on the homeownership waitlist. But we want to do an even larger outreach to those who may not be aware of the homeownership program, begin working with them to get them ready for next steps, and in conjunction with that, NHP will begin purchasing homes in the Falls Church area, our City of Falls Church. So this is the attachment B you all were provided in your packet that goes through things that I've already discussed and things I will discuss on the next coming slides, but it just lays out what we anticipate the program to look like long term. And as I mentioned, first steps are the staff in HHS conducting outreach to residents and providing those names and information to NHP Foundation. They will begin working with them simultaneously, purchasing homes, conducting rehabilitation work, getting those residents ready to become homeowners. And what that will entail is a variety of things. First, they must take a first-time homebuyer course, as required by Virginia Housing. They must meet guidelines and regulations that are in place by Virginia Housing to what is defined as a first-time homebuyer. They'll have to do, you know, different things to become ready. And as they become ready, the home will be sold to the eligible buyer with that restrictive covenant once again being recorded against the property. And as I mentioned, NHP is going to sell the home to an eligible buyer, and they'll receive the developer fee on the first portion of that transaction. So the first portion of that transaction is NHP buying the home and rehabilitating it in preparation for the new homeowner. So the developer fee will cover the cost of holding the building, insurance, caring for the home as it becomes ready for the homebuyer, paying for staff to work with the homebuyer, and to also oversee the rehabilitation work. I will now hand it over to Mansour Abdul Malik, the Vice President of Development at NHP, who will further explain the program.
Oh, thank you, Alicia. Thank you, members of council, as well as Mr. Mayor. We've done a lot of work on this in conjunction with the Housing Commission and obviously staff, in order for us to come up with a program that we believe not only meets the essence of what we originally applied for, but also gives us the opportunity to be able to have those funds recycled in order for this to be a sustainable program. So Alicia, I think, hit all of the highlights on this, whereby we will purchase market-rate houses. We would then enter it to some level of renovation, sell those homes to eligible buyers, and then use the proceeds from that reduced sales price in order to further supplement the next sale. So the slide that you see here is a very quick diagram that shows going clockwise, the funds going from Virginia Housing to the city, of which the city then grants those funds to NHP. The anticipation is in order for us to be able to deal with rising costs, to attempt to keep the cost down. We have the ability to finance this. However, if we were to finance it, then obviously we would incur costs, interest, and lender fees, and legal in order for us to do so. So the thinking is that we would be able to draw down tranches of funds in order for us to be able to purchase properties in cash, which would alleviate that additional cost, of which we then purchase those properties from the market at a market rate price. We would then hold those homes and be able to renovate those properties in preparation for the buyer to come and purchase. We've currently modeled that we would hold the homes for three months. So the preparation of the buyers is obviously key, but we've been building a waitlist, and that waitlist obviously is going, we're going to grow once we do widespread marketing, in order for those buyers to be prepared and ready to go soon after, you know, a house has been identified. Of which that home, once it's sold to that eligible buyer, the proceeds that are garnered would then go back into circulation in order for us to go and buy the next house. And again, we would like to be able to buy up to eighteen houses. Again, we are very sensitive to the fact that prices are rising, both construction as well as home prices, and consequently, because interest rates are rising, the purchasing power of the buyers is also eroding. So when we look at how much a person can afford when those interest rates go up, obviously, they can afford a little bit less home as those interest rates rise. So with that being said, this process allows us the ability to get up to eighteen houses. And upon sale, we've modeled whereby the city's original contribution comes back to the city as well as the eighty-twenty split. So over a ten-year period, the city will not only get refunded its money, but also have enough money in order to go and buy additional houses while still keeping the original eighteen affordable. So that means that we will be able to keep this moving into the future while adding on to the inventory, not just stopping at eighteen houses and having those affordable houses fall out of circulation. So this diagram gives a very good breakdown of how that lifecycle goes, and it continues to go until the money's depleted. And from here, I'll go ahead and pass it on to Richard Donahue, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Yes, I just wanted to introduce, this is Dana again, Richard Donahue is from Ameris Bank, and he is the senior mortgage banker there. He did a lot of the mortgages, almost almost all of them for our ADU homeownership program. So he's very familiar with how these homeownership programs work. He does mortgages for Arlington, Alexandria, and Fairfax, all of their affordable housing programs. And so I felt like he would be a really good person to speak and answer questions on how these programs work, and he's also reviewed our program. So with that, I'll pass it to Richard.
Hello, members. I like what I'm hearing. I know it's a lot of work to do, but it's definitely something that pays a lot of dividends. To go back a little experience, I've been working with, like, Habitat, City of Alexandria, and Arlington, and they all have similar programs, which I know you guys modeled a lot of it around. Like Arlington has the seventy-five-twenty-five split. So when I hear the eighty-twenty, I think that's a good model. At a bare minimum, that's what you want, because you avoid the mortgage insurance on it, you know, with the twenty percent help for the down payment, so you don't have to get that involved in there. Other than that, obviously, it's a challenge. You know, we have to, like you said, the higher interest rates has been an issue. Luckily, people nowadays are having better credit, you know. They now know their credit scores through Credit Karma and things, and they're paying down debts. So in some cases, we're finding people a little bit better prepared to do this. We do use, though I use, the two main programs I use are the BHDA, the Thirty-Year Fixed, and Dana may tell you at some point they have a reduction in the interest rate. It's called Spark that lowers at one percent. If we can get hold of some of that, that makes it a little better, gets the rate down below market. And then if not, we also use something called a Fannie Mae Home Ready, which is still a very competitive, more competitive rate for a first-time homebuyer, and it's a little more flexible on some of the payment options. So, you know, we have some tools, as you're probably aware of, that we can use, and that's what sort of takes the beginning round of looking at the people and seeing if they fit or get them trained up to meet the guidelines, so when they come back, they're ready to go. Any questions? I don't know if I talked too fast or too much.
No, no, that's fine. Why don't we go ahead and see if there are questions or comments from council? We appreciate all the work you've done to date, all of you, to try to put this program together. Let's go ahead and see if there are any questions from City Council or the Housing Commission, and see where this conversation takes us. Josh, would you like to start, or your colleague?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I can just make some initial comments. So the Housing Commission are in full support of this program. We have been since we began thinking of the best uses for the Amazon Reach Two Grant. This is, of course, because we feel affordable homeownership provides a unique opportunity and an equitable opportunity to, once again, improve access to the city for people of diverse backgrounds, whether that is diversity of income, ethnicity, household makeup, or race. However, over the months of, you know, having these presentations and seeing the program and the process and being developed, doesn't mean that, you know, the design of the program has not come with its own policy concerns for long. The most recent, the equity split that was just mentioned, has gone through a few iterations. And this current breakdown, I feel, still leaves questions of whether the twenty percent of the home sale to the city will be enough to grow the program in the future. Additionally, there have been a lot of questions and concerns around the developer fee, which a few have deemed unusually high for a nonprofit developer request. I believe the origins of this figure was made more clear at this month's Housing Commission meeting, but I feel it should be explored further by this body tonight. But let me just end by saying that my enthusiasm for this program comes from my own experience growing up in a more affordable home purchased in Winter Hill. However, the recent sale of my childhood home and the kind of offers we received has also increased my desire to see this program be approved and stood up as soon as possible, especially before the number of properties with the potential to be purchased under this program decrease even further. So thank you. And I'll pass it on to my colleague, Meredith Anderson, if she has any additional comments or questions. Meredith?
Thanks. Yeah, I think I'll echo most of what Josh said. We've gone through many, many discussions and iterations of this. We've seen a lot of material and seen how it evolved over time, and we're really grateful to the partners for continuing to take our feedback and, you know, provide us more options and being a great partner in these discussions. It's great to see where we are now. I do think that the piece, you know, I think, you know, given what we've talked about from, like, neighboring communities, the equity split feels reasonable to me. I do think there is the question of, will this fully regenerate the money? It probably won't. But I think as part of a step in this direction, this is a pretty great effort, and there are other ways for us to work to also get funds in for affordable housing. You know, we had the report that was done a couple of years ago that talked about affordable housing in the city, and I know that's something else. You know, we've been occupied with the Amazon grants for a while, but I know that something else is on our radar, too. And so I think that, I think that equity split makes sense to me. I do think, like Josh said, I think we want to just make sure we fully understand the developer fee and, because there have been questions about that, and just make sure everyone is comfortable with that. But I think they've done a good job of continuing to work with us and trying to make some of the assumptions clear to us. But overall, I'm fully supportive of this program and hope that we can move forward soon.
All right. Thank you, Meredith. Let's move on to City Council. Does anyone on council have any comments or questions about the program? Ms. Leon?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. I echo what Meredith and Josh are saying around, you know, this is a great opportunity. It's, it's in the matter of the devil is in the details. So I'm looking forward to continued efforts, right, to kind of work through some of the observations that I'm seeing on this, so that we can get to the outcomes that we want. And there is definitely progress that's been made since the February, you know, discussion, Mansour, where you attended, where this was really in concept, and you could see it just based on the written word. So let me start with my first questions. It would probably help, Celeste, if you could bring up the pro forma. Let's look at some numbers.
Just a moment. I'll bring it up for you.
Or sorry, Cindy. Whoever's driving.
Yep. There we go. Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes, the numbers. Okay.
By the way, if you're not speaking, if you'd be so kind, just to mute your computer, I think we're getting a bit of an echo. But anyway, please continue, Ms. Leon.
Okay. So when I take a look at this, let's start at a high level with the equity split. Help me understand, when I take a look at the pro forma subtotal expenses on that first sale, you know, you're looking at expenses of closing costs for just the first sale, rehab, caring costs, and due diligence, clocking in at about thirty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-four. That's just the first sale. We have additional cost, right, or expenses with the second sale. When we take a look at the sum of all those costs, it is greater than the sum of the equity return, right? Because our return, assuming these factors, is, there's a page two, Cindy, and it keeps scrolling, is showing up at thirty-six thousand, right, which is less than the cost of that first sale. So the question I have for the team is, why should the city absorb that cost versus changing the equity split to cover all operating expenses involved with managing this shared equity fund? That's my first question. And maybe I'm missing something, but I'm concerned about that added liability and future sustainability to the program when we can't even net even on expected or projected pro forma expenses with the equity split.
All right. I'll take a stab at this. And Alicia, Dana, please, please hop in here to help me where there might be some additional information that should be shared. So my understanding of this pro forma and how it's organized is there is a purchase, and then there's a subsequent sale. So within that subsequent sale, we have subsidy, and the subsidy plus the reduced sales price should equal up to what the cost of that house is. After ten years, the expectation is that that property will have appreciated in value, whereas though that homebuyer will be able to sell that home, they'll be able to reap the benefit of the equity, and that equity is, you know, the money that they've actually used to pay their mortgage down, right? They're paying principal and interest. So after ten years, you're going to have the reduction of the loan amount, and then you're going to have the increase in the value, whereby the delta is going to be their equity. Now, granted, they must pay off whatever the remaining balance is of the first mortgage, as well as pay back the amount of subsidy that was put into the house. So the city will actually get a portion of that subsidy back, as well as the eighty-twenty split. So the city not only gets the thirty-six thousand dollars, but they also get back what the amount of the, excuse me, the second mortgage was. So I can't say I fully understand what you mean by the city is not able to cover its costs. The amount of subsidy that was put in is coming back to the city, as well as the twenty percent above.
The numbers here are showing that the operating expenses that you are citing are greater than the split that we get. So it's very black and white to me. It has nothing to do with the equity, other than what is indicative to me is that the threshold for the twenty percent might be a little bit low. What I'd like to see is a very conservative position for the city, where we cover the expenses that you are going to charge back to this fund, Mansour, you know, in that equity split, so that we do not incur additional liability from an operational profit and loss pro forma. If you took what you put down here and actually profit-lossed it, right, into a pro forma profit and loss, this is not a pro forma profit and loss, and making, you know, I think you'll, you'll see how that run rate would look like, right, over ten years, multiplied by the volume. So that is my biggest concern, right, that I'm expressing right now in this equity split, is that it looks like the city will come up short, right? I also hear that Arlington at seventy-five-twenty-five, perhaps there's a reason for that. And I'm all supportive of the equity split. I'm all supportive that the greater split goes to the homebuyer. But I want to make sure that we're covering our operating expenses on a day-to-day operational level, right, as we go through this. It's just judicious fiscal management.
I think we should also make sure we put it in perspective. The city's, the city's amount of money that's at risk, the city had to match with four-hundred thousand dollars. The vast majority of the funds, the grant funds or REACH funds, of which the combination of the two make up the full pot of money. So when you talk about the return to the city, what number are you using as your original amount? The four-hundred thousand or the three-point?
I'm not making numbers up. I'm using the numbers you're showing me. I'm.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking the question. You're saying if we run it out, and the question is, what number are you starting with? Because if we were to look at it from the four-hundred thousand dollar perspective. Because if we were to look at it from the $400,000 perspective, I think we could probably see it differently.
Yeah, so you're starting off with 3.4. That is fixed, right? We're not getting more money from Amazon. So let's, you know, if you're asking me what the starting point is, is the intention is to make sure that we get as many units as we can with that 3.4, and we need to manage our expenses in a lean way, right, and we need to cover it. So I have concerns on the 80/20 split, and I don't think the 20% is adequate to cover what the city, you know, what the city's perspective, particularly when I look at how you've itemized the operating expenses. And it's really to cover you, Monsor. Like, this 20% is, it's just not covering your costs unless you're able to decrease your costs.
So how about a 75/25 split? Would that cover it?
I would love to see that analysis.
Well, I think we've...
No, 70/30.
We looked at that, and the, from a policy perspective, the question came up was, is a 75/25 split enough to incentivize someone to want to move? And we tried to make sure that we were utilizing lessons learned from the existing ADU program, where those individuals really, they don't move. So the split needs to be enough whereby it incentivizes someone to be able to move whereby if they were to stay in the same AMI bracket 10 years into the future, albeit they would be making more money, but things would obviously be more expensive, whereby they would still be at that same AMI. The combination of their income at that time in the future, as well as the cash that's earned from the equity split, should afford them enough to be able to go and buy another house still within the city and incentivize them to be able to do so. If it were to change, the question comes in is, does someone feel that a 75/25 or anything that is going greater to the city, a greater percentage going to the city, incentivize someone to move? If not, if they do not, they're not incentivized to move, then the city won't get any of the money back because they'll stay there, of which there wouldn't be a payoff of the original amount put into the house, nor would there be equity split because the home would never be sold.
So Arlington does this right now, though, right? 75/25?
I, from Rockford, Donahue, that's 75/25 splits from him.
That's what they're using right now. And Monsur does have a good point about the incentive to stay there. They do, he's right, they don't move near as quick as if you had lower. But on my end of it, it's easier to get somebody in with the 75/25 split. You have more to work with. It can then cover some of the closing costs. These people typically don't have a lot of money for closing costs. So it's sort of, that's why maybe you make it optional to do 75 or 80, depending upon the situation. Some come with money, some come with $10,000, $15,000, they can pay the closing cost, and you have less of an option to do it then. So that might be an option to make it a movable kind of a number on need.
Yeah, so that's the level of transparency I think that would be helpful for Council, right? And what I'm, why I'm asking the question, because when you look at these numbers, you know, there's a reason why, you know, if you prod and coned it, right, like why you're coming forth with 80/20. My gut tells me that, you know, I'm very uncomfortable with 80/20. I'm not seeing it. I would love, I would need to see why 75/25 wouldn't work. I would love to see, you know, just making sure that we are very clear on what it is we're trying, you know, what we're trying to do. It is legitimate that folks might not move, right, because it's affordable housing. So is there a way to balance that in other ways by not using the equity split, right? For example, can you put some language in the restrictive covenant, right, that, without violate fair housing, that the agreement, you know, on this is a specific timeframe, right? So I'll sort of, you know, to support some turnover and, you know, in a healthy way with humanity involved in it, what are other avenues to achieve the fact that, you know, or mitigating against the fact that folks might stay in there forever? The point that you brought up. That's one aspect of this. If I could explore another aspect of this pro forma. When we, Cindy, if you could go back up to the developer split. I remember in February, I've, and I've asked more than once, and I'm going to need y'all's help, but I asked for a clear justification for why this proposed developer fee is justified at 12%. I do see that you will put two full-time NHP staff, but when I take a look at the salaries of two staff, which sounds like it's luxurious, by the way, because Dana doesn't have two staff, she has one person, Alicia, managing the entire portfolio for the city. So we've got $1.184 million in developer fees projected, you know, over the 18 units at $58,000 roughly per transaction. Besides the two FTEs, what is in that cost? What are we, what is the operating cost other than what you've itemized on carrying, right? That is, where's the breakdown of the cost in the documentation that's been shared to date? Perhaps I'm missing it. Could somebody explain that to me in more detail?
Sure. We did a memo, of which that memo had a very detailed breakdown of the scope of work that we anticipated for Scattersite project. So it's more than just the FTEs, but also the project management associated with dealing with two transactions and the risk associated with holding Scattersite housing.
What's the cost of that project management, then? Could you identify the level?
It's all encompassed in the 7% split. So this is actually customary, if not actually cheaper than what a typical developer fee would be, when you look at it from the perspective of doing any other type of commercial real estate transaction, which this is, given the size of it and the frequency and of us holding it. So this is not unlike any other Scattersite project that we've been able to work on. So we detailed that in the final section of that memo where it lays out the justification for that developer fee.
Yeah, it's not sufficient. What I'm looking for is line item for what are you paying for marketing? What are you paying for these two project managers? What are you paying, right, for advertising? Like a breakdown of really G and A to justify a 12%. Without that, it's very hard for me to actually feel comfortable approving a 12% fee on this. So I mean, I need help. I just need to see more detail other than words. I need to see words next to numbers with the total sum, you know, to understand where the 12% is.
Well, again, this is customary, so I'm not sure. The last development project that the council had reviewed, but this is actually lower than any other developer fee that you would typically see from a development of this type.
Yeah, I think you need to...
It's a $9 million development. When you talk about the entire transaction of both purchasing and reselling those homes. So for us, this is on par with what we would typically see. So, you know, I'll gladly be able to share with you the Qualified Allocation Plan, which Virginia Housing distributes annually, which shows the developer fee as it being customary and something that the state of Virginia will go ahead and designate as a particular percentage, and you'll be seeing it, seeing that it's lower.
Yeah, so 3.4 million. You know, when I take a look at this, I, bottom line is, I am not getting the specific details that help me feel very comfortable with the 12%, so it's going to be hard for me to support it. Let me, let me stop because I know I see other hands raised, so let me pause for a second and let others speak.
All right, let's move on to Ms. Connolly. Mary Beth? Are you there, Mary Beth?
That Ms. Leon has?
I'm sorry, you're on, Mary Beth.
Okay. So, and these may be questions that have to be figured out later, once a program is existing, but as you were talking about working with people and having a waiting list, I'm just curious about, is there the same kind of prioritization that we use for getting people onto the rental waiting list? Does that, how does that waiting list exist? And so is it employees of the city, residents of the city, people who work in another business in the city, or anyone can apply?
Yes, thank you for that question. It will mirror the ADU program that we have in place now with first priority as our senior residents, second being those who live or work in the city, and third priority is everyone else that does not fit those guidelines.
Okay, so when you say work in the city, that's not just an employee of the general government or the schools, but someone who may work at any other business in the city?
Dana, Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's just they have to work in the city, they don't have to work for the city.
Yes, it's the same as our ADU program priority two, which is live or work in the city. So that would be the priority.
Okay. And so that waiting list does exist already? The beginnings of it?
Yes, there is, there are already individuals on the waitlist for the homeownership program, and we will, as I mentioned, continue to conduct outreach, maybe to, likely to those who maybe don't look at the paper or come to City Hall, we'll be conducting outreach to those individuals as well.
Is there, is there a way that they have to start in the rental program and then move to the homeownership program, or that's not part of the progression?
That's not a requirement, no, but I would say we certainly welcome those who are in current rental ADUs to come and apply for homeownership opportunities.
Could somebody be on both waiting lists?
Yeah, I was going to say, when people call to get on the waiting list, they have the option to sign up for rental or homeownership, and some people get on both because they know there's no way they can buy right now, so they'd rather be in a larger unit or a rental that they can afford. So we anticipate, I mean, we haven't had a new homeownership opportunity since 2008.
Right, right.
So we have lots of people that have been renting all this time, you know, waiting for a homeownership opportunity. Currently, we have 16 people on the homeownership waiting list.
Okay.
So we anticipate it's going to be a big demand.
Okay. And then you mentioned 2008, and I know I've asked this question in the past, I just want to confirm it again, and that is, the problems with the way the agreements were set up in 2008 have, would be eliminated by the 80/20 split, or whatever the split ends up being? Is that correct?
That's, that's our hope, and each covenant on our homeownership property is different. I mean, they're not all the same, so we would be looking at covenants that other subordinate communities are using as a model, because those would definitely be more current than the ones that we used, you know, in 2008 and before then. So we, you know, we know that it's going to be a good covenant going forward, looking at what we did in the past.
Okay. And then in the cycle there, there's a time for rehab, and there's money in the cycle for rehab of a house. What if you buy a house that doesn't need rehab? Or are we assuming that because the prices are low, most of them will need rehab?
Well, I think the anticipation is that that would be an average. So the overarching goal was for us to be able to replace maybe one major system. So for instance, you know, if a house needs a new roof, we would do the roof. If it needs, the roof is okay, and it needs a new HVAC system, then we replace the HVAC system. But we wouldn't go in and do a wholesale renovation. When I bought my house, it needed a little bit of work. The kitchen was great, but I needed to update the bathrooms on my own. So, you know, they would have that same opportunity, but our goal is...
So it's not, we're not going to renovate the whole thing and make it sparkling brand-new? We're going to do some basic rehab that needs to happen?
Correct.
And then leave it to the homeowner to do the rest?
Correct, yes.
Correct. Okay. What if, what if the homeowner goes bankrupt or loses the home, doesn't pay the mortgage?
That property goes in the foreclosure. That's, it's a pretty, you know, bad scenario to have to go through, but, you know, that property goes in foreclosure and, you know, the process associated with it. With the city being the second lien holder, obviously you won't have the same rights as the first mortgage lien holder, so, you know, whatever is left over after that property is sold will go to the city, but again, it's a pretty ugly process.
Does the covenant then include that in there as a worst-case scenario, that it still would remain affordable, or does it fall out of the Affordable Program? If you have to go through...
We had that happen one time in one of our, with our ADU and the city, there was a second loan with the city, and so the title company at the time did not realize that it was an ADU. And so once they found out, you know, that that was the case, then the city was paid first, and then it went into a foreclosure, but we did lose the unit.
So then we, is that what would happen again? We'd lose the unit? Or is that how it's...
Well, that was a long, that covenant was from, I mean, I don't even know how long ago, so we would, you know, try to tighten that up going forward.
So that would be my question. Let's make sure that in whatever covenant it is in, that that worst-case scenario is included.
So I'm not sure, as someone who does real estate, I'm not sure that if we are a second lien holder, that that's going to be the case, no matter what you write in the covenant. If in fact we are subordinate to a first lien holder, that's the idea of being subordinate, is you get wiped out by what's on top of you. But I would ask the city attorney, if she's on the call, to maybe handle that question. Carol, are you on the phone call or on the Zoom call? Carol McCosker?
I'm here. Yeah, I think that's right. I think that basically the first lien holder would probably never enter into the deal if they didn't have the ability to go in and get paid first by selling the property not subject to restrictions. And so that's usually what happens in the, in these types of arrangements when you're the second lien holder, is you lose the ability to restrict the use of the property at that point.
Okay.
And I just wanted to note quickly, that's the importance of that upfront education and first-time home buyers, trying to setting them up for success is never a guarantee, but certainly when you have a program where you have some counseling and upfront support, we can minimize the risk.
Okay. And then my last question is, Mr. Donahoe is here just to give us education. Do they have to get their mortgage through Mr. Donahoe's company, or is, are you just here as to give us some education on how that works?
Dana can answer that, but no, I'll be one of the people that'll be, I guess, one of the options. I know it's not exclusive, but again, I think Dana's the one working on that.
Yeah, if I may, no, there's no exclusivity. We do want to encourage these first-time home buyers to pursue a mortgage through Virginia Housing, mainly because they have a lot of great grant programs that they can work with in addition to getting a mortgage. Virginia Housing has some of the best interest rates you can find in the Commonwealth, and it's, you know, a great, great organization to work with, but they do not have to go to Virginia Housing. They can go to any, you know, lender that they wish to, but we do encourage them to at least look at Virginia Housing as an option.
Okay.
I would say we do want to, you know, we would want them to go with the lender who is knowledgeable about affordable mortgage products that are out there. Like, you know, Richard had to get, I think he's an approved VHDA Virginia Housing lender.
Correct.
So we would hope that whoever they work with at least knows about the programs that are out there so that they could educate the buyer on that.
Okay. Thanks. I don't have any more questions.
They also don't want to have people go with a lender that may not be able to come through with it or get a adjustable rate mortgage or something that is, you know, not good for them, which, again, VHDA only has the fixed rate, you know, the standard loans, so it's safer that way, like she mentioned.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. The unmute button is slow again tonight. So thank you.
So thank you to staff and the Housing Commission for joining us. I share the concerns that I think both Josh and Caroline talked about on the 12% developer fee as well as the 80-20 split. I think Caroline did a good job illuminating why I think we need to rethink that. Not only make sure we cover our costs, but if the point of this is to create a revolving fund, I worry that the 20% won't be enough to really perpetuate the program, to really make it revolving going forward. So I think we need to spend a little more time working through that. So I'm going to put those aside, because I think we've talked about those enough. One policy point that wasn't actually clear to me until the last Housing Commission meeting, where we spent a long time talking about, that I want to make sure the rest of council is aware, is that the future sales price will be capped, so it doesn't get to grow at the same market appreciation. So I think one of the examples from the staff report or one of the attachments is, say there's a property that is purchased at 680, the homeowner holds it for a while. The market normal appreciation might have taken that property up to 992,000. But in order to keep it affordable for a future owner, the sales price is capped at 850 or so. And then that difference between the 680 and 850, that is what is the 80-20 split, that equity appreciation. So that is a nuance that I want to make sure that everyone really understood, that the homeowner participating in this program won't reap the benefits of a full market appreciation. It'll be capped at kind of affordable growth rate. So that's an important point that I want to make sure we understood. We spent a long time talking about 80-20, but one of the questions I have is around down payment. Is there a requirement that homeowners participating in this program have a down payment? Because I know that Mr. Donahue mentioned 80-20 in the context of a down payment, but I think that was really for the equity split, for that appreciation.
VHDA does make you put in at least 1% of the sale price at a bare minimum. But you can set your own, like the county or the city could say, we want X amount, 5,000, 10,000. There's no, you know, anything more than 1% is, is okay, but 1% is what they want. They won't negotiate that away.
But if you don't put 20% in and there's mortgage insurance required?
Correct, yep.
Staff or NHP, do we have a position on this? What is our requirement for people participating in the program?
Sure, now the expectation is that the person will put in about 7%, of which the expectation from that 7% is really being able to utilize a lot of the VHDA products, in particular, the Down Payment Assistance Grant, as well as the Closing Cost Assistance Grant. And, you know, Mr. Donahoe, please, you know, speak, speak to those if you could. But because the City of Falls Church is a, is a high-cost area, it does afford it a little bit more money to be garnered from, from Virginia Housing from it. But the expectation is that the combination of homebuyer assistance grants, as well as their own cash, would allow them to be able to put down about 7% give or take to purchase the house.
Yeah, go on.
I was saying, in terms of that timeline, which I thought was helpful, when people get on the waiting list, do they essentially have to qualify for these down payment assistance programs first? Because there's kind of a chicken-and-egg problem. You need to know how much down payment you need, so do they qualify first? And then get matched the home that we've already bought? Or do they not get the home, and then they figure out how much down payment they need to apply for?
We usually go through the prequalification, make sure the income meets the guideline, the credit meets the guideline, and the debt-to-income. Then we talk about the cash, because, you know, of course, sometimes they don't have it. We say we need 10,000, they have four. You know, they can get gifts for it. They do allow a gift from a relative, or they can save it up. So, but if their credit's a mess, then they're pretty much on the sidelines until they can get that done. So you're trying to weed out sort of the ones that, that aren't going to make it no matter what, either too much income, not enough, or credit. So that is sort of why the 16 will be, you know, looked at quickly, boom, 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 go through them all, and we'll figure out maybe six or eight of them are legit, and the rest are kind of like to be determined later on.
Yeah, I'm not too worried about demand. I guess there certainly will be lots of people beyond the 16 once we start advertising the program. One of the early concepts we've talked about is getting realtors be part of the program so that even before markets come, units come on the market, we are aware of potential sales. Has that been started up? Because I think that's a really important part of this, to be successful. If we're going to be competing on the market, I think we're going to have a hard time actually getting any housing units.
No, that has not been started, as long as we don't have an agreement for us to start working with them. In essence, in order for us to start partnering with realtors, we need to have the ability to start buying homes. We've identified a number of them, but we have, have not put anything, as far as agreements, with any realtors in place as of yet, because we don't have an agreement to move forward to begin buying houses.
But at least, at least started the conversation with realtors on whether they would be interested in participating? Would they be paid out of that NHP fee we've talked about? How would that work?
Well, from the, there's two sides of it. From the buyer's side of the transaction, typically the buyer is not the one that's paying that full-boned of the fee, typically the seller is, of which on the sales side, the anticipation is that NHP would actually represent the seller. We would represent ourselves as a seller, being as a highly structured transaction, and we wouldn't have any additional negotiation of price. The price is...
Yeah, I understand how seller fees work with realtors, but for them to kind of essentially scout out what's available in the market and get in there before something's listed in MLS, that's kind of the extra service that I don't know whether we have to pay for.
Well, that would be, that would be on the buyer's side. We have not modeled us having to deal with any fees from that. But in the same sense, again, we've identified a number of realtors for us to be able to work with, but we have not put anything in place in order for us to move forward with them.
Okay, and I understand from the staff report that we have a December 2023 deadline. That is to use the initial 3.4 million, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And so if 20%, 25%, whatever we end up with, the capped market appreciation equity split that comes back to the city, there is no time limit on that amount, is there?
No, that would not be Virginia Housing dollars, so it wouldn't have the same timeline as, as the 3.4.
Got it. Mary Beth also asked my question about kind of learnings from previous homeownership. My understanding from the three other places that we did homeownership is that we didn't have any sort of equity split. And so essentially, the homeowner essentially gets to take all the equity with them. And there's no capping of prices, correct?
Are you talking about our current ADU program?
Homeownership ADU program.
Oh, the homeownership ADU program?
And condos, and the buyer, and the Broadway, the Spectrum, maybe at Whittier as well.
We've only had like a very few resales, and not any since I've been here. So I'm not really sure how they worked, you know, at that time.
Yeah, so Mary Beth's question was, you know, let's make sure there's an equity split, because I think that was a key lesson learned. But I guess I want to make sure we go back to those three or four places that we did do a homeownership, and if there are learnings beyond an equity sharing that we learned from those, because there might be other nuances that, you know, if we go back and look at those covenants, we're like, oh, we should have done this differently. So let's make sure we look at that besides the equity part of it. My final one's more of a kind of a policy point. So I know ideally, we'd love to provide as many homeownership opportunities as possible, which is why we've targeted kind of around 18 or up to 18. And I know that because of obviously the house of price, or the, the price of housing in Falls Church is so high, that probably limits us to condos. But given that we've talked about the importance of diversity of housing, one point I will throw out there is I want to make sure we think more broadly. So if we need to trade off in terms of total number of units and actually get some townhomes and single-family homes in there, I think it's important to actually build affordable stock in those larger units, because we talk about the importance of being able to house families and create more housing opportunities outside of condos. So I, for one, would be open to a trade-off that says, well, instead of shooting for 18, maybe we shoot for 12, because we might get a couple, you know, small, single-family homes or townhomes in there. I think that's a policy discussion worth having.
Yeah.
It's a good policy discussion. I will just note, I'll also have to include Virginia Housing because of the grant terms that's been signed, but they also understand those issues you've raised, as well as the cost of housing and so forth.
Yep, and obviously, we're all subject to the market. And so it's what comes on the market, which is why that realtor point is really important. But I think as things come up on the market, I want to make sure we are not so tied to just having condos and hitting an 18 number, and think about the broader benefit that we can do for the community here.
Right.
That's it. I think we need, because my take is, given where we are in work session and some of those big issues that like to resolve, and I think from reading the staff report, the city attorney's only done an initial cursory review. I think this needs a little more time before it goes up for a first reading vote. But understand that, you know, there is broad general support to do this program, but the devil's in the details, as Caroline said, and we want to make sure we get it right. So thank you for the time on this so far.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. I would like to think even more broadly on housing stock. But before I do that, I just want to say thanks to those of us, those who have gotten us to this point. It's important of the concept of what we're trying to do here. Obviously, we want to get administrative costs to be as, as reasonable. And at the same time, I'm recognizing that Amazon is putting a lot of money into this, and I don't want to look to give force too hard in the mouth. Nonetheless, I'll let others handle that a little more first and such things than I am. But the nature of the housing stock is, is what I'd like to focus on just for a second. The many good things that we've done here in Falls Church would be outlined by you all, if you're able, actually to find 18 homes that are anywhere near the price range that you listed. I don't know how you're going to be able to do it. You know, a fixer-upper here is getting on to a million dollars. And that leads me to ask, if we were somehow able to construct condominiums of, of family size, would this program allow us to buy new into developments such as that? So that we could, you know, start out with two or three bedrooms catering to some families? An ice tag that would be, I don't know, pick a number, 400, 600, 700, a housing... Currently, if we were able to create that with help from the market, would this program be able to buy into those kind of, you know?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think that goes into the point whereby if we're, we're spending more money for the housing, then we would have less houses that we would be able to build. Because even though housing prices are expensive, so are our land prices. So, you know, I think we're, we're willing to, to work, work with the city in whatever direction they believe is the best policy. And if it's working to do, you know, new construction houses on, on plots of land, we think that's a better use of funds, then we're flexible and we're willing to do that. I just believe it, it will fall pretty short of, even though it's up to 18 houses, it starts to go contrary to the, the program and how it was described, Virginia Housing. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I will note the grant was not written to buy new construction or to delay to build new construction, because I think we would miss the 2023 deadline. I do think that's a good concept to explore going forward. And as Housing Commissioner Ms. Anderson noted, we do have some good policy documents and other tools in the toolbox we need to pursue. This is, this and the year three are just two opportunities we were able to capitalize on the Amazon money. Thank you, Councilor and Mayor.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question. And so, in the short run, the answer is no, but if we get the program up and it's successful, down the line, some of the money that's brought back in might be able to go to the prospective two- and three-bedroom condos that somehow we might be able to get built in the next, oh, you know, three to five years. Okay, thank you.
All right, next up is Ms. Hiskye.
Thank you. I just wanted to join in the discussion and say that I'm also interested in looking at the options of trade-offs as Luddy highlighted and described in, in an effort to ensure that we can spend the Amazon REACH dollars before December 2023. As we've discussed, we may not have an opportunity to have 18 units in that range. So looking at flexibility we have in there and what options we can have to ensure that we take best advantage of those funds would be great. Also, going back to Caroline's initial conversations with regard to the developer percentage fee and ensuring that we're covering our costs with our initial intake, because we don't have control over when homes will be sold, when we would recognize that equity, we need to make sure that we're covering those. So I too would like to see that performed up. And then I've just a really quick question on the three-month holding timeframe. Since we have, we know we have at least 16, we haven't advertised elsewhere, we have lots of interest and opportunity. Is that holding timeframe due to the nature of rehab? That you think needs to happen on average, it's going to take three months?
That's a great question, thanks for asking. The holding timeframe takes into account not only just the renovation that would occur, but also takes into account the buyer being prepared to actually buy the house. So we wanted to build it in some cushion. I think the anticipation is that those buyers, when they are on the list, that they'll start working immediately towards all of the first-time homebuyer procedures in order for them to be financially prepared. But that gives us some cushion to be able to work with someone who may need an extra 30 days or so in order for them to be prepared to close.
Okay, so the 16 that are on our list are not, we don't invest the time, since we haven't had this program, we haven't invested the time to ensure that they're financially ready and able to go, is what we're saying. They're just on a waiting list, and we have to go through the process of going through all the financials.
Yeah, they're basically an interest list, because the program's not up and running. So, I mean, people have been on there since last year that have been interested, but we haven't done any, you know, anything with them. Once we, you know, get approval to start the program, then they'll have to take a Virginia Housing workshop, whether they use Virginia Housing products or not. It's a great workshop that talks about how to buy a house, how to prepare, you know, all of that kind of thing. So we need to make sure they're educated first, and all that'll have to happen once, you know, the program starts.
Okay, thank you. That's it for right now.
Okay, and before I go to Ms. Leon again, why don't we get new comments, our new council members? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I certainly thank the council colleagues for asking all the questions and fully support getting answers to each and every one of them. My question goes, it's more of a legal question. Who's, from the time of closing, is the owner the, the person that we're engaged with here? And what are the legal rights and responsibilities of the developer and the city? Who will make sure that insurance is covered? What if somebody falls in the house? What if the house burns down? Maybe we should just talk a little bit about liability issues.
Sure, very good question, thanks for asking. From the, the time that the REACH funds are granted to NHP to begin purchasing, NHP would be the owner record of which we would be the ones that would be fully at risk, not the City of Falls Church. And we would remain in that position until that home is sold to the new homebuyer. So we would be taking on all the risks. We would be the ones that would make sure that the property is insured in the event that there is any issue, you know, with regard to a neighbor complaint or what have you. You know, we would be the ones that would be responding to that immediately, as well as performing the asset management duties associated with it, which means, you know, maintaining the utilities, making sure the grass is cut, making sure that, that obviously insurance is there, paying the, the real estate taxes, you know, all of the things necessary in order for us to, to keep that property stable until it's time for it to be sold. So that is 100% what NHP, the city does not, not absorb any of that liability.
So the city would be named an additional insurer then in any insurance policies that are issued? The, the owner, once the closing occurs, the owner is responsible for maintaining the insurance. We need to make sure that that's done, because if it's not done and something bad happens, you lose your collateral, or more worse than that, injuries would go uncompensated. So, um, so I, I think I understand your answer, but I think it'll take sort of risk management supervision.
So if you're not speaking, please unmute your computer.
And to Mr. Snyder's question, once the property sells, because the city would be in a second lien position, of course, Virginia Housing would have their required assurance, so will the city. So we would be an additional insurer?
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the Housing Commission that has some additional comments? Josh Meredith? I'm going to take that as a no, at least for the moment, and go back to Ms. Leon.
Yes.
Caroline?
One question, and Dana, is we're allowed to extend this if we need more time. What is the stipulation under the current agreement? For how long that extension beyond 123123 can last? Six months, a year, is it codified?
Just from our past grant that we had with Virginia Housing, they're pretty lenient with extensions. If you, you know, detail what the need is, they will pretty much give you an extension for the length of time that you need. That's been my experience with them. I don't know exactly how long we would get it, but they're pretty understanding about, especially, it took us a year to even get the agreement, so, so they understand that we're going to need more time.
Yeah, yes. I want to...
Sorry, Alicia, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to expand on that for you a little bit.
I just wanted to expand on that for you a little bit. Um, in the current grant agreement, it has, uh, we need to put in the request by November saying that we need that extension. Um, it does not say in the grant agreement how much time that extension is for. I, we would write that in our request to Virginia Housing and it would be a conversation between us of would it be granted or not?
I want everybody to note that that is flexibility. We should probably be aware that if we exercise would be beneficial so that we are not rushed and we are very deliberate, you know, um, in, 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 in working through this because if there's no penalty and it's accepted, I really recommend that staff consider giving yourselves the gift of time.
I, I will note that I think that is expected because
Sorry. I'm muted.
I think part of that is expected that we're unable
Cindy's trying to speak, but she's still on mute.
Well, my microphone's showing I'm not on mute.
Still can't hear you. I think she's got something, you know, wise to say, which is why I'm curious. Is she typing it out?
I am not because we can't chat. Can you hear me now? All right, I'm going to, turn the camera off.
Sorry, we still can't hear you, Cindy.
Yeah, I'm going to work on it.
The, the chat is muted.
Whoever started the meeting might be able to
Caroline, you're muted, you're muted now also.
My gosh, this thing is ghost-like.
I hear Caroline.
Yeah, no, I didn't push the mute button, though. It, it somehow
I'll try to unmute Cindy.
Yeah.
I don't think I can unmute her, no.
Thank you.
It says she, you're not muted, so I don't know what's going on, Cindy.
Um, I'll call her and see if maybe she could see it through the phone.
All right, did she have other things she wanted to say, Caroline?
Yeah, so, um, question for Richard while I have you. Um, in your experience, I, I'm curious, have you seen, for example, in Arlington, um, an approach where this is all done in one closing? Assuming that there is a pipeline of, you know, mortgage-ready prospects that have been groomed, have you seen programs, shared equity programs, actually do this under a lean budget and do one close? Not this, the, you know, the, the, a two, two transaction approach, um, that, you know, increases our cost?
Um, no, I'd be honest, Alexandria uses rebuilds, uh, something together, uh, it's another, it's like, uh, NHP. And I don't see the, the, the first transaction. I see when it comes to the market and what the price is. And I don't even know the number of months, but I assume it's the same thing, two, three, four months at the most. Uh, and it's pretty tran, it's pretty straightforward. Um, I hear what you're saying, can it be done that way? Um, I, I just
I think you need experience, yes.
Yeah, I think Mansour might have on it because, you know, when you're buying and fixing up and flipping, uh, that's sort of what you're trying to do is to flip it, uh, and, and fix it up before you finish the, uh, sale. And until you have ownership, you can't go and work on it, you know, so that would be where the problem is. You can't go in and do the work if you don't own it. And so the new buyer doesn't own it because he isn't, you know, he can't be involved in it yet and buy it and then have someone else work on it. So I think there's, I don't think that's going to be a legal thing where someone's going to work on it and then just have one settlement when no one owns it yet, or he doesn't own it. He's the ultimate. So I think that's more the problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I've got a question or two. Um, some of these are for Carol. Um, so I saw earlier on, this is a ninety-nine-year program. Um, why isn't it perpetual? In other words, I'm, I'm sure I won't be around, but ninety-nine years from now, I guess someone's going to get a windfall if the covenant, um, goes away and they could sell it at market. Why isn't this a perpetual covenant?
I, I don't know that that's really a question for me. I cert, because I haven't been involved in developing these details. I don't know if that's something that's come from, uh, the gra, out of the grant or where it came from.
Does anybody know, um, why, I guess this program was proposed to, to not be perpetual?
I know Alexandria does ninety-nine on theirs. I, I'm not, I, I should know what Arlington is. Uh, I think it's ninety-nine also. I think it's just the number they come up with.
It may be a rule against perpetuities type problem that it has an absolute limit.
Yeah, but I mean, covenants regularly go on record without having a limit. I mean, there's tons of covenants that go back, you know, ages. And so I'm, I'm not, I guess I'd like to know that. I know it's a long way off and it's not obviously something that I got to worry about. Uh, you know, but I do think for a city that has a long history ahead of it, um, having a, a ninety-nine-year term where at some point in time, the last person standing gets a windfall because there's no more restriction, um, just seems kind of odd to me. And so I guess if someone could run that down by next time we speak, uh, about this is, is what's, what happens at the end and why is there an end at all? Um, second, I guess I would say, I, I think it would be good to cover our costs in the twenty-five seventy-five split, maybe a better way to do it. And I guess I would just suggest a little bit more thought be given to that. Thirdly, I guess I want to make sure I understand this a little bit better. My apologies if, uh, you know, this is something I probably should have understood otherwise, but, so when you buy that first unit, um, NHP is going to buy it, they're going to buy it at market, and the city's going to pay a fee, a twelve percent fee or some other number fee. And then we also pay out-of-pocket expenses, is that right? That's in addition to the twelve percent fee?
But there's, there's project costs, so it's the cost in order for us to be able to perform the due diligence, uh, as well as be able to manage the asset. So yeah, there's, there's costs that are project costs that are, are outside of the developer fee, yes.
So this is basically like a cost plus a fixed fee? Is that, like, if you were doing a construction agreement, that's what you would call it?
Uh, yes, that, that's a, so good way to liken it to, yes.
Okay. In terms of when you sell it, um, is there a real estate commission due?
Uh, no.
Paid to the, a cooperating broker or these are done without any brokers at all?
So that, I think that's something that we're still having a conversation about. Uh, we have, have anticipated that because of the highly structured nature of this, that the representation for the buyers can be relatively limited. Uh, so keep in mind of a few things. Uh, number one, there won't be any negotiation of price, like, the price is already going to be reduced by, you know, seventy-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so there isn't any negotiation of price. Uh, we will be able to facilitate all, all of the, uh, tours in order to give people access, uh, and work with them to be able to gain access to the units. Uh, and also have, you know, pretty structured documents. And, and Mr. Donahue, please, you know, speak to, to the level of nature of those structured documents. But because of the highly structured nature of this, uh, the, the role and scope of a, of a Realtor is, is really reduced. Uh, they aren't helping a person find a house because those homes, we already have them, have them, you know, in a, in a waitlist, uh, for folks to be able to see. So it's our expectation, at least from the seller's side, that we would go ahead and represent, uh, ourselves and be able to sell those homes. Uh, although we understand that a buyer, you know, can go and have their own representation, uh, I just don't see where, where the need is, given the vast majority of the things that a Realtor would do, uh, the city and or NHP will have already taken care of just because of the str- structured nature of the program.
But so, for example, uh, let's say you go to sell it after three years, someone wants to move on, whatever happens. So you market it or put it through the market back through our program. If, um, you're not the owner, right? So the owner has the right to do what they want to do, don't they? I mean, do they, the, the covenants say you can't have a, a broker or agent list your property, it has to be sold through NHP? Or how does, how does that happen? In other words, like, if I'm just the owner, right? I'm going to have a right to do what I want to do in terms of hiring a broker, not hiring a broker?
Well, Dana, answer to it, I think, you, I think it goes back to the city to sort of help tell them what the price is because it's a control of price, correct, Mansour?
Yeah, and Dana, please jump in here, Alicia as well. But, you know, once, once we sell that house to that eligible buyer, that's, that's it for NHP. You won't, won't hear from us again on that house. Uh, however, because there would be restrictive covenants on there, uh, currently in, in, you know, uh, Councilman Hardy made mention of this, that, um, it is a restricted price, uh, of which the, uh, normal appreciation for the City of Falls Church is about four percent, you know, three eight five, I believe. Um, but instead, what we are doing is we are appreciating the homes based on the average median income increase, which is about two-point-four percent, give or take. Uh, so that it, they are appreciating at a lower rate than had it not been restricted. So that means that that home buyer in the future is going to have a, a certain amount of money that they'll be able to, uh, ask for as a sales price because it will be based on the AMI in the future. So with that being said, uh, I believe they'll still have to go back through the city in order for them to be able to confirm what that sales price could be, the maximum sales price could be, given that AMI at that time, of which they would then be able to sell that house and it would still have those covenants on it.
So you, you're
I apologize, go ahead.
Well, please.
Um, I was going to add, um, your question more is if we're allowing them to have a broker when they're ready to sell their home. And that's not a part of the restrictive covenant. The covenant is only restricting them income-wise, so if they want to have a broker or Realtor, um, do the selling of their home when they're ready to sell, that's, we're not restricting them to that.
So, I mean, but part of the reason I ask is somebody's going to want a contract to buy the property. And typically, in Virginia, real estate agents regularly prepare, like an NVA, our home, they just fill in the blanks on a contract. And so when a seller wants to sell the property, if they don't have a Realtor, either the buyer or the seller, then somebody's got to prepare a contract. And so I'm just trying to figure out sort of mechanically how this would work. That's typically handled often in a residential setting by the broker. And so I guess what I'm saying is if there's no broker involved, I'm curious as to how the documentation would be taken care of, as I'm guessing both the buyer and seller wouldn't have the expertise to prepare the contract and also, um, required disclosures. You know, there's some disclosures you need to do, um, according to Virginia Long, they sell a new home. So, I'm, I guess, that sounds like that's outside the scope of your work at NHP. You're not doing the resales, right? You're just initial sale only?
Well, we will be doing the resale to the eligible buyer. So we do have in a performer that we, we would have council be able to work with those documents and we expect to be able to work with the title company. So I think between the two, uh, we will have sufficient coverage to make sure all of the disclosures and the necessary documents as a requirement for the Commonwealth would, would be, would be taken care of. Uh, but again, we are, we are not saying that a, a buyer cannot have representation, but it, it's, um, it's, it's one whereby the, the cost associated with that extra, uh, service is, is hard to justify because we will be doing the vast majority of the work.
Got it. I'm not suggesting you would have one, but someone has to prepare a contract, uh, and prepare the documents. So we're pretty, but just to confirm, so your, uh, work here is to initially purchase it, then sell it once, and as it goes downstream, that's the city's job to sort of supervise that, uh, those transactions to the extent they need supervising. Um, and so all costs associated with your, the work, out-of-pocket costs are passed on to the city, is that right? Like, in terms of the budget we saw earlier, those are essentially out-of-pocket costs and those get passed on to the city, correct?
Yeah, those are, those are necessary project costs, so all the costs associated with actually executing on, on the program.
Gotcha. And your own costs, though, are absorbed into the, your twelve percent fee, correct?
Correct.
But there's no management fee, there's no additional layered cost of your own, uh, in-house folks. Um, you don't pass through time for your own employees, correct?
No, sir. That, that, that amount is that fee amount. Uh, one of the things that we made mention very early on, uh, is that, you know, we are, are willing to, to cap that, um, so that we do not go above the one-point-two. Um, so if there's any additional funds that the, the city gets, so for instance, we have, have done an initial analysis to see if the program, uh, qualifies for any other type of federal funds, uh, of which it does, uh, score very well for Federal Home Loan Bank, which, uh, incentivizes affordable homeownership up to about a half a million bucks. Uh, it can actually go up a little bit higher. Um, we would not, for those extra houses, we, we would not charge anything above the percentage or, or the, the one-point-two million cap, uh, whichever is the lower of.
Okay. And in terms of the covenants, Carol, would you be preparing those? Affordable housing, uh, you know, the, the restrictive covenants?
Uh, we, I can, can I take, take that?
Maybe. I prefer Caroline.
There we go. So, so I don't, I, I don't really know the answer to that. I, my understanding is that staff will be preparing a draft. Um, I have not seen them at this time, and then I would certainly have an opportunity to do some work on them, yes.
Yeah, that's what
But then you could
That's what normally happens. We prepare the draft and then we submit it to Carol, um, for her review, and then she gives us feedback and then we, you know, prepare it based on her, I mean, make those changes or whatever feedback she has, we would incorporate that.
Okay, well, I mean, given that they're legal documents, Carol, I mean, I think you ought to have ultimate responsibility for them. Um, okay, well, I think that's all the questions I have, at least at the moment. Does anyone have any final thoughts, particular friends on the Housing Commission? Okay, well, then I'm going to go ahead and thank, um, Josh and Meredith for joining us this evening. We greatly appreciate all your efforts, both tonight and, and other days and nights that you've done to improve the housing, uh, situation here in the city. And thank the folks from NHP and, and others who've joined us tonight as well. And, and let's go ahead and move on to the next item, but thanks again to all who joined us just now.
All right, thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Have Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's, it sounds like just, I guess maybe I should have done this a moment ago, but it sounds like there's some issues that I think folks would like to work through in a more detail before, uh, this goes on, uh, the, uh, agenda, uh, for action. Is that a, is that a reasonable summary of the comments we heard tonight?
Yes, please.
And Carol, given, I think, a couple of comments directed you, if we could have you weigh in on these before we see the, the next turn of it?
Yeah. I, I've been, you know, when I saw the draft, I asked about some of these things and they just haven't been started yet. But we'll, yeah, a little more time's probably a good idea on this.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. Mr. Shields, who's handling this?
Uh, Council, uh, Mr. Paul Stoddard will be handling this item. And, um, what it is, is the, uh, is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment that would, um, affect the transitional zones in the City of Falls Church. And, uh, since the council's last work session, we have had a couple of additional workout sessions, and, uh, and Mr. Stoddard will summarize the changes and some of the key policy issues. The request tonight is to provide input for this and then discuss scheduling it. Uh, the staff recommendation, if there is consensus on the main policy questions, uh, to schedule a referral to the Planning Commission at your meeting next week on April twenty-third. Mr. Stoddard?
All right, thank you, Mr. Shields. Thank you, Mayor Tiber, and members of council. I'm Paul Stoddard, Planning Director with the city. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present the report tonight. Uh, as Wyatt said, the request, starting on line three of the staff report, uh, it's a two-part request, uh, for council to review the latest draft updates. As the city manager said, we've had a, a couple staff-level workouts, uh, since the last work session. Uh, and also for the council to schedule, uh, consideration for first reading and referral uh, to the Planning Commission at, at your next regular meeting, uh, on Monday, May twenty-third. Uh, line, beginning at line eight, there's a summary of changes since you all have last seen this material. Uh, and I'll step through the enumerated list here. Number one, uh, I'm sorry, some of these things are, are the same as they, they were, but it's, in total, it's a summary of all the proposed changes for T, so I want to walk through them just so folks know what's on the table. Uh, number one, district consolidation, bringing together the T-one and T-two zones, as was recommended by the Zoning Ordinance Advisory Committee, uh, which was a resident, um, an advisory group composed of city residents, uh, and, uh, same as last time, I've attached their full report, uh, from December of twenty-ten. Uh, number two, uh, removing single-family as a by-right use, again, a recommendation that came out of ZERAC. Uh, number three, expanding the allowable by-right uses. I know that's something that's been asked about by council at previous work sessions. Uh, they were expanded, um, largely to provide for, uh, what are expected to be neighborhoods serving commercial uses. Uh, number four, this is obviously what's been in front of the council at several work sessions, expanding allowances for townhouse and multifamily housing. Uh, new, since your last work session, the only path forward for improving such a project would
would be a council approval through a special use permit. Also changed since your last work session were additional restrictions on the lots that would be eligible. One restriction is that lots could not have frontage on the Broad Street or Washington Street. And a second restriction is that the lots could not be larger than one acre in size. Here we go. Number five in the list, building heights, no changes since you last saw this. Still, the recommended maximum is either four stories or 50 feet, whichever is less. And lot coverage and setbacks, no changes since you saw this either. Lot coverage max of 80%. Line 38, the recommendation, as I mentioned, it is, staff's recommendation is to schedule for your consideration for first reading and referral. And that recommendation is based on two things. Beginning at line 42, I think staff thinks that this is a recommendation that's responsive to council's direction, which was to create an entitlement path for smaller all-residential projects, and that would provide for a wider variety of housing types, as well as housing scales, than what's otherwise seen throughout the city. And why T zones, that begins on line 47. T zones, under the current proposal, would maintain their position as being transitional areas between commercial and residential districts. And T zones have experienced challenges to redeveloping. The common practice to redevelop a T zone is to request a rezoning to a B, and then work out the final design through the conceptual development plan, through the SE process. And that's evidenced by the relatively limited amount of development that's been occurring on T zones, at the same time that there's been, obviously, notable development in the B zones, but also a steady pace of teardown and rehabilitation and reconstruction in the R zones. Background, just one thing to highlight there on line 62 and 63. Previous work sessions, obviously you all have been a part of these, but four work sessions held to date, and then the fifth one tonight. Line 66 is background and T zones, which I've gone over in previous work sessions, so I'll skip it tonight. Same thing with line 93 and 101 are descriptions of existing projects, either in the city or around the region, that have been covered in previous work sessions. So the new section begins on line 126, which is timing. As Mr. Shields said, staff has prepared a tentative schedule. If you all were to consider first reading and referral next Monday, staff's recommendation would be to begin the engagement process with the Planning Commission with not only a work session with them, but also a public listening session at their regular meeting on June 1st. Provide a month's time for staff to prepare responses, hold a second work session with the Planning Commission on July 6th, and then schedule a Planning Commission action July 20th, that same month. And then bring it back to council for work sessions and consideration in August. Of course, this is a tentative schedule, and it's the first time council's seeing it, so obviously staff wants to get direction on the schedule, as well as the substance. In terms of...
I don't agree with a meeting on some of those dates, just, or your information. To my recollection, we're not meeting on, at least, meeting on 138 and possibly 137. But I guess that's not entirely relevant at this moment. But I would say that I think there's some issues with the August dates. But sure, sorry for the interruption. Please continue.
No, not a problem. The public comments, there have been some public comments. One was attached to the packet, and there were two other comments that came in, and I know the city clerk's office forwarded those to council. Otherwise, there are no changes to the attachment. What I thought I might do since this, and I can take direction from council on this, but I know there's a lot of code attached to this, and what I thought I might do, if it's helpful to the council, is walk through and just summarize what's in the different sections. All right. 166 is an intent section, and that's new since you all last saw it. This, I won't read it out, but this was added to try and capture the conversation, not necessarily agreed to by council, but staff's attempt to collect a consensus out of the last couple of work sessions on what's the purpose behind the T zones, and try to capture it in writing. The principal uses, beginning on line 175. You can see line 189 adds restaurants, and line 190 adds limited commercial uses. That's staff's attempt to capture neighborhoods serving commercial uses to make those allowable in the T zones. Line 210, conditional uses. Line 223 is where townhouses, apartments, and condominiums are. That's the only section where it's referenced in this code, and because it's only allowable by conditional use, and then Section 48867 reserves that authority, in this case, to council. A council approval of an SUP would be the only path forward for multifamily in the T zones. Let's see, line 314. So this is that Section 48867, which is cross-referenced in the earlier code. And this is not, it's all highlighted in blue, but it's not a new section of code. It's one that exists previously, and it's been used. There are various uses in various districts that have supplementary regulations, and they're all captured here. This is just historically how the code has evolved. And so these supplemental regulations, staff worked it out and agreed that the best structure was to use the same thing, move the supplementary regulations into this 48867. Originally, I think this code probably only included, this code is now used to break out, Part 1, our authorities reserve to council. There's a Part 2 further down, which is authorities reserve to, for SUPs approved by the BZA. That's the way the code always existed. Previously, they were intermingled. The reason this is all highlighted in blue is because in this draft before you, they're broken out. So Part 1 only deals with council approvals, Part 2 only deals with BZA approvals. So Part 1, if we stay back on line 319, you'll see there are three listed uses, drive-throughs and drive-throughs. There are no changes to those. That's the way it was. We've just copied and pasted that code. Assisted living facility, there's no change in that. We've just copied and pasted that code. Townhouses, apartments, and condos. This is what's, this is the new section that would be added to this 48867, and that begins there on line 326. So this is where we formalize the lot restrictions, no frontage on Broad or Washington Street, maximum lot area of one acre. And then the considerations. These considerations were included in your staff report last time. We've just captured them in the draft code now. Line 343 is a lot of blue text, but there's actually no change in the substance. It was just part of the copy and paste. These were the restrictions that were already in place for drive-throughs, which council may remember require a council approval, and these were all the conditions. We just copied and pasted into a council-only section. So that continues for three, four pages down to line 605. All right. Actually, I should go over something, just so you all are aware of it. If you go to line, if we can go back to line 579, there's this large block of text, and again, this is a copy and paste. We haven't reformatted it. This is, as it exists in the code today, and these are considerations that council always has to take account of when considering issuing any special use permit. So these would be in addition to those specific considerations listed for the T uses. Part 2, line 605. There are no changes to this section. This is what was in the code today. Those pieces, the red strikeouts there on lines 608 through 612 are the pieces that have been pulled up into Part 1 above. And then down on line 641, there is one clarifying note that in the code today, there are restrictions for multifamily and for taller multifamily housing in the RM zones. Those provisions only apply to the RM zone, but it doesn't actually say RM zone. So as staff wrote this out, we recommend adding that clarifying note into this section of code. Otherwise, there are no changes. And then, beginning at line 666, is the redlining of all the drive-through text that was moved up into Part 1. So if we skip down to line 920. This is the, thank you. This is the table of heights and lot coverages and setbacks. This is copied over from your last work session, and no changes since you last reviewed it. And that, that's the end of my walkthrough of the code, and obviously, I'm happy to take questions. And I guess just in resetting where we are in the staff report, maybe line 126 is the timing section is maybe a good place to leave the report. Thank you. All right. A lot to consider and absorb. Let's go ahead and open it up to questions and comments. Ms. Hiskon?
Thank you. One area, the big change that I see from the last time we reviewed this is the addition, or the elimination of any properties that have frontage on Broad and Washington. When I go back and look at the map of the T1 and T2 zones that were circled in purple, I believe, my understanding that leaves just the, basically where the 24-hour fitness is, Park Avenue, and the Hillwood location. So we're really just talking about four locations? If I'm understanding that change correctly, it's a gigantic one. So it's remove everything up here, that Washington and Columbia area, and Washington and Green Bay area? Am I understanding it correctly? Could you kind of just walk through the thought process of that change?
Sure. That's, and Cindy, if you're able to go to line 77, we have a copy of the zoning map there. Thank you. So the recommendation, the staff proposal this time to limit to those properties without frontage on Broad and Washington, as well as the smaller sites, that was done in response to the conversation that larger-scale development deserves a review by council, especially when it's, you know, creating possibly a dramatic change to the character of the neighborhood. And also the preference that these larger sites along the commercial corridors are more rightly sort of reviewed through the special exception lens. And so that was the two-parter, was if it's on a commercial corridor and it's a larger site, then it ought to be steered toward either a byright use in a B zone or a consideration for council under a special exception. So this proposal steers it toward the smaller sites and off the commercial corridors. I'm sorry, council member, I think you're muted.
You're muted. Tabby?
Thank you. So am I, I'm correct in my assessment that it basically takes, it leaves just those Hillwood, 24-hour fitness, and then strip along Park Ave if they are small enough? And then that other circle, is that over on West and Broad? Isn't that covered under Founders, is that where Foundager 2?
Correct. And that's now been rezoned to B. We're continuing to use the old map. We haven't updated the zoning map yet to reflect that council action.
Understandable. I just didn't want to make sure I understood it correctly. So really, there are only, there are three locations that this would then apply to, meaning small enough off of Broad and, or Washington. That could be a draft, that could fall into this new creation of language, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Right. Off this map, yeah, there are sort of four pockets. There's the one just off of Washington and Maple. There's one off of Roosevelt, there's one off of Hillwood, the Park Avenue one. And then the Washington one, I guess I should caveat that, under the current partialization, no, they wouldn't be eligible, but if someone were to pursue a subdivision, they could conceivably carve off a lot in the back, although they'd still have street frontage requirements and adequate access, so they couldn't create an orphaned parcel in the back. They would still have to do it in a way that had street frontage.
Okay.
Oh, which first would then negate the ability to do the T zones, because then it would have frontage onto Washington. So no, by including the frontage requirement in combination with the size acreage, it preserves those parcels. The only ones would be, the only caveat to that would be if it had another street frontage, if it was on Great Falls or Columbia, something like that.
It's a pretty narrow band of what we're discussing here. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everybody. That was a big, in my mind, that was a big shift from what we were discussing before. I'll wait and listen to everybody else's questions and come back around to the balance of mind. Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I also flagged that, so I think it probably takes it down from like 3% of the total parcels in the city down to like 1%, Paul, so we're really talking very limited area. And I guess a counterpoint to why exclude, I guess, Broad and Washington. So I understand, obviously, those are much bigger parcels, and, I mean, the ones in Washington in particular have big institutional uses that we don't foresee kind of changing hands, but I understand the intent. But as I take a step back and think about the point of a transitional zone and the importance of, you know, that transition, is, you know, transition in terms of density and height, that's exactly why we want it in some of those areas. Like nobody, we often hear from our constituents that nobody wants 10 stories or 8 stories everywhere up and down Broad and Washington, right? And so I think it's actually important to have some diversity. And so I'm not actually opposed with the original plan. I think if you actually have the restriction that it's less than one acre, that might get at the concern we had, which is, you know, big developments merit a bigger review. But I will leave it at that. Second question is, I thought in the last version, at least a discussion point we talked about, was mentioning that both stormwater and affordable housing were kind of important, kind of, I guess they won't call them concessions, because it's not a special exception process, but things that we kind of called out as important. If a project were to go through the new T zones special use permit, is that somewhere in the code language, Paul?
Yes, depending on how you read it, which is a, you know, a satisfying answer. Let me jump to the considerations.
I got lost in all the drive-through language that got moved around, and so...
That's what I usually get stuck. I think it's in front of all the drive-through language.
Like, wait, why are we touching drive-throughs? I thought we were talking T zones. I was very confused.
So, line 334.
Got it.
So line 335 speaks to affordable housing. Staff didn't want to include specific numbers. I think some of this is, right, this is council's determination about, you know, whether something contributes or doesn't contribute, right? Because one project could be a contribution, you know, for a particular type of housing, and that's what the city needs at that time, or in relation to the project approval that's being sought. And so that really needs to be done on a project-by-project basis. And then line 337 about environmental stewardship, I think would be that opening to talk about something like a stormwater management or a tree canopy preservation, because again, that would be based on a site-by-site basis. Is it on the high ground? Is it on the low ground? Is it on the route to a major stormwater flow? It would all be site-specific.
I guess the question for Carol, I guess, leaving it vague like that, does that mean that there is kind of a negotiating process similar to the SE? Or should we be more prescriptive?
Well, I think, I mean, I think there, I mean, I think for one thing, you have, I would not, I think, I need to think harder about that, but I don't think that you want to be more prescriptive, because I'm not sure you have a basis for having something that it says a certain amount. And so, so I think that, yeah, and I think we also ought to have affordable housing that is, you know, we, some of this language, we might want to have something about that addresses the needs created by the project or something. But I think you can leave it general. There's going to be some negotiation of whether that's sufficient to meet the standard, but that is probably the best way to go about discussions of this affordable housing, because there isn't a way to have something really specific that is, that's in the code that says this is what you can require.
Got it. So I'm hearing from the city trying to leave it vague for flexibility reasons?
Yeah, we may want to work a little bit on the specifics of the language, but I think we can leave it fairly general. And as we consider a particular project and what needs it generates, then we consider the extent of affordable housing that might be needed to address those needs.
Okay. So while we're talking about the special use permit, Paul, can you help me understand, I guess, what is that process like? Is it a planning commission and council review? Is it other boards? How does that compare to an SE process? Help educate me on that.
Sure. So that, some of this I'll defer to Carol, but they, the SUP and the SE sort of fall from the same body of state code. Typically, the connotation is that an SUP would go through the BZ, well... The, typically, the connotation is that a, an SUP would go through the BZ, well, it's in the city state code, or I'm sorry, the city's code, that typically an SUP would roll through the BZA unless, as the final approving authority, unless the council reserves the right to make that final determination. And obviously, staff's recommending that in this case. So an SE process, which folks are typically familiar with, staff recently charted an 11-month approval process for an SE. That would include multiple work sessions with council, preliminary workshop with boards and commissions, referral to all boards and commissions, public hearings along the way, and that's how we stack up to an 11-month process, which is deserving considering the scope and scale of what's being proposed. Through an SUP process that's being voted on by council, it's actually stipulated in the code, but it's a required, and again, this is just code, we copy and paste it from the existing language, but I think it's one staff would have recommended anyway. It's a formal referral out to the planning commission as well as the architectural advisory board. And so those two groups would make recommendations on the project, and then it would go back to council. I think if we were to map it out, you could probably make it something like a six-month process from application to final consideration by council. And that would include, that's inclusive of the referral out to the planning commission and the AAB. And of course, a site plan, even if the SUP is approved, it still needs to go through site plan. And that has final vote by the planning commission and mandatory reviews by architectural advisory board as well as the urban forestry commission.
Got it. So certainly, nothing close to byright.
No, no, it still rolls through numerous groups.
Yeah. So I read through the public comment letters we received to date, and I think majority of the feedback centered around, hey, we just need to make sure that there's lots of public engagement. And so I think that will be an important, if this moves forward at any point, to educate the community on what this proposed special use permit process is like and compare and contrast it to the SE process, which the community is very familiar with, you know, the multi-year process and the community engagement. So that was helpful, Paul. Thank you. One of the things that actually came up at the council office hour is that the mayor and I hosted a couple weeks ago is the future land use map. I know that we've primarily been staring at the current map of where T-zones are. Have we looked at kind of where future T-zones could be and how this proposal would look in those areas?
There is a, sorry, I immediately flipped my binder. I carry around a copy of the future land use map. I don't know who else does. But there are larger areas of the city that are designated as transitional and all, to go a little bit planner nerd, there is a difference between land uses and zoning. So there are not exactly a correlation, but certainly there are areas of the city that are planned for transitional land uses. It's just a, it's just a function that they share the same name. But largely, they're where they are today, as well as some core, some pieces of property south of Broad, sort of between West and Lee. And those future land use map designations actually predate my time with the city. If I had to guess, they go back to the 2005 comprehensive plan or maybe the 97 comprehensive plan. But if I had to guess, if I was a planner looking at, I would say that there's probably a recognition back then that if there's going to be commercial use along the south side of Broad Street, then it makes sense to have some transitional use before you get to the single-family houses immediately south. Just a function of the city street, where there's Park Avenue to the north, which can serve as a transition. There's no similar street to the south.
Yeah, living on south side of Broad, I think, and actually, the ZOAC report mentioned this as well, is that we're creating a lot of conflict by having single-family homes right abutting kind of Broad Street without that kind of transition. And so I could see how those were designated as future T-zones. But I guess the question is, just because it's on the future land use map, doesn't mean that they're automatically going to be T-zones. They'd have to get rezoned, and obviously, there's a very specific process for that, too. So that, the concern is, oh, my gosh, this is going to impact 3% or maybe now 1% of the parcels in the city, plus the future T-zones. Those future T-zones don't become T-zones automatically.
That's correct. Rezoning, the zoning is what controls what you can do on the land, and a rezoning is a legislative act that is held by council. That also requires multiple work sessions, public hearings, referrals to the planning commission.
Got it. Final question, and then I'll hand it over. Again, the other major theme is, hey, we need a lot more community engagement on this, based on the letters that we received. I guess I've been thinking that if this makes it to first reading, similar to how, you know, we have development projects with first reading, that is the referral out to our boards to weigh in on this. And that's when we get a lot more public comment and make the proposal better. Is that how staff is proposing when you kind of outline the timeline, that there is kind of adequate public engagement timeline if there were to be a first reading referral out?
Yeah, so, sorry, I'm just making notes as I go. Yes, so there is, so yes, obviously, whenever you do a, whenever you consider a zoning change or a development change, you want to have an adequate amount of public engagement, and that means getting out to the stakeholders, letting people know that there is a change being considered, giving them an option to review it and weigh in on it. So what staff had recommended in previous work sessions is getting something ready for council's consideration for first reading, and then if council wanted to sort of direct staff to go collect that, engage with the larger public, staff would recommend doing that after a first reading. And, you know, depending on the feedback that came back and the level of change council wanted to make in response to that feedback, you could always rewrite it and re-advertise, you could always do another first reading on a new piece of code. Just because you've taken a first reading on something doesn't guarantee it's going to get a second. So, but I do think a first reading is a way for communicating, yes, this is something that the council's seriously considering. In terms of the groups that staff has recommended, there is a code requirement to go to the planning commission, and so that's what we've added in the schedule. If we wanted to go to a larger set of boards and commissions, I would look for ways to piggyback on meetings that are already happening, given the resources we have. That's why we listed the public listening session on the jointly with the planning commission work session as a way of engaging the public without doubling up on staff resources.
Got it. So one tactical suggestion that I might have mentioned before, I love our kind of old-school yard signs, when we put yard signs up that tell people, hey, there's a public meeting, or there's proposed change, you know, in this area because it's visible. And so all the current T-zones, whether it's the 3% or the newly reduced one where it's really just a limited, maybe 1% of the total parcels in the city, old-school yard signs, I think, are a pretty effective way of getting to people. And I think in response to one of the concerns I read in the letter is, gosh, who does this really benefit, right? Because it seems like it impacts people adjacent to those T-zones, which is a valid concern. But I think my true back to the intent of why we are looking at T-zones, which is really to add diversity of housing in the city, the people who this benefits aren't at the table right now. And so I want to make sure we think about that in terms of community engagement. It's not just hearing from current property owners. Obviously, they have a valid perspective and stake, but the people who aren't at the table because they can't afford to move into the city or don't have housing options and housing types, their voices are just as valid, in my opinion. So I want to make sure we think about how to engage that population, and perhaps that's through the housing commission. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much. A couple requests. When I look at that zoning map, it's really hard to understand the full impact, so I would like a greatly expanded map for us to see exactly what's where and what's involved here, whether it's the 1% of the 3% thing. So that would be very helpful for me. The second thing is, considering that we're sort of early in the discussion, we've already received a significant amount of citizen impact, I think it would be unfair to the citizens to go through all of this in the course of a summer, where a lot of people are going to be away. I think it's just simply not fair to move this in the way that's been proposed. Again, based upon already the citizen comments that we've received, I think each and every homeowner that could be affected by this ought to have an opportunity to know about it and input. And I think it's a serious mistake. I remember when, in previous years, when things were talked about being done over the summer, the reaction was pretty negative. So I want to avoid that sort of negative reaction as we move through a series of complicated issues. I think another graphic that would be very helpful is for people to understand the full build-out that's being proposed in a given lot. What does it really mean when we're talking about lot coverage? That was one of the debates with the McMansions. We had certain things written down, but you really didn't understand the full impact until you had some models. So I think that would be something that would be very helpful as well. I think in some ways, you've done a pretty good, pretty good job. And as I understand it, the special exception would allow what the ordinance already suggests as limitations, in other words, the four-story or 50 feet. If you went through the special exception, you wouldn't be able to go higher than that. Is that right for those types of occupancies?
Yeah, perhaps one distinction to draw is that the SE process right now is pointed to the B-zones, where this would be an allowance specifically for the T-zones.
Right.
So people wouldn't have to pursue those rezonings. They could stay in T with the more limited rights.
Right, okay. But if you went through the special exception for, in the T-zone, it doesn't give you the ability to build a 100-foot building. That's the point that I'm trying to get to.
Correct. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, you wouldn't, in the T-zones, you would not be eligible for the height bonuses. So you'd never be able to get beyond that 50 feet that's suggested.
I think it's very important, but again, I think it's really, to the extent that we can have the community understand the full impact of this, and I do think that moving on a formal first reading is a bit premature, even though I'm in agreement with large sections of this, but if the decision is made to go forward, I think it would be a serious mistake to make the final decision, the second reading, if you will, during the course of the summer. I think that would be a serious breach of faith with the public. But I think a lot of this is well done. And I would agree with Letty. I was surprised at the amount of language on the drive-throughs. And thanks for explaining that. I know you'll get that question. So those are just some initial comments, and I may come back for additional questions and comments. But thanks for a lot of good work on this so far.
All right. Mr. Duncan?
Please take those comments on Mr. Snyder. I hope, as I think I expressed at our recent meeting, is that we could get this finally into the hand of the planning commission, which is the last meeting. I had some discussion about the topic and were concerned that they hadn't been, you know, engaged in the discussion that we've been having at council. So whatever we do, I would hope that since it's not the summer yet, we could get that on to their plate and get their feedback, you know, and early mid-June, we'll hopefully go into the summer or benefit of what do they think. I just sat down, you know, what am I telling somebody that we're doing this? And this is my reason for, you know, wanting to see this move forward in some form, because we need to use land more efficiently, so I can threaten the less expensive, more affordable homes, those probably in the middle market bracket on smaller parcels of land. My elevator seats is why we're even looking into this. Which is, one, before, what if I'd say that I would like to see us not rule out Rockington and Broad as my facts for this, just because it seems like a lot of effort to go to, to address only 1% of the lands, almost like some sort of five-pointing process. I prefer that we urge lower-scale development on some areas that are near, actually, parking. What's staff thought on parking requirements as we enter into the, you know, the development of that? That's, I guess, question number two, is if we include, I think, South Washington, I mean, it's hard to, we've got a lot of Mid-Atlantic, South Rockington, which will benefit from some kind of redevelopment and probably not the large-scale redevelopment that we've seen on several other parcels, because it does about a lot of homes in nearby neighborhoods. So what would be, would staff think about letting us open the door back to the way it was originally, where we can continue that part? So parking first, and then that second question about opening up the door?
Sure. And I apologize, the audio was breaking up a little bit on my end, but if I heard correctly, one, sort of the why was sort of a three-part, one, a more efficient use of land, a path to providing more affordable housing, and a way to use smaller pieces of land, parcels of land to get there. And then, sort of two questions. One was on parking. So regardless of the changes being proposed in the, in the T-zones here, the parking regulations as they are would still hold. So the parking regulations are formula-based on the number of housing units and the configuration of those housing units, how many bedrooms they have. Those requirements would still hold. And same as happens today, an applicant could come in and propose what's called the transportation demand management plan and a parking management plan. And those have been successful in reducing parking demands at recently constructed multifamily housing. It might work a little bit differently on a smaller site, but that's not something that would, as part of the project, it would be reviewed and approved by the planning commission, same as they do now.
Okay, so the project would not be disqualified if it did not meet the, you know, standards like the SE projects that we do, you know, like down to 80% or 70% or whatever, if a proposal came in that proposed a lower parking number? Because again, we want to encourage development of the sort that somebody can afford to buy it, and they don't have to buy a car to live here, and, you know, that's a factor of affordability, too, and parking requirements are all tied up in that.
Right. Structured parking is expensive, especially on a smaller site, where you don't have the economies of scale in terms of the drivelanes and the ramps and the number, and the width of the parking bay. On a smaller, on a larger site, you can really, right, there's a standard dimension for parking bays, and when you have a larger site to work with, you can, you can make it fit. On a smaller site, you got to fit it in where you can. And so it may be that a developer is highly motivated to have a strong TDM plan so that they don't have to dig another layer of parking. And no, that wouldn't disqualify staff's review or council's consideration of an application, it's just something staff would flag and bring to council's attention. We would certainly work with the applicant to structure an effective TDM, and ultimately, that decision would be made by one council when it reviews the SUP application, and if that's successful, then the planning commission again to review the technical site plan.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's my second question, I think you heard. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So the second question, I think, was about location. As you mentioned, the previous iteration did not have that restriction for lots not having frontage on Washington and Broad. That's a lot of negatives in that sentence. The, which is why I paused saying it. And what you're asking is, one, could that be opened up? Or maybe, two, could it be opened up for specific areas of the city? You mentioned South Washington quarter, in particular, sort of south of Maple, where the commercial corridor does back up directly into the single-family areas.
Uh-huh.
You could certainly structure it that way. I know staff is certainly trying to respond to what we hear, and I think there's some merits to, you know, if you, if you already have T-zones that back up to single-family housing, then are you an essence already in the transition zone, and you would want to allow for some sort of townhouse or multifamily in that case? Certainly, there are townhouses along South Washington, and I think they work well. So certainly, a use that's worth considering.
Okay, all right, fine. Sorry, third question. Building heights, increasing building height maximum four stories, required step back. What if a property has, you know, residential use, like on Broad Street and residential use across the street on Park, does the step back affect about the front of that building? Or is this a building that has a front on the back?
So I think the question is, sort of, how is adjacency considered? Is it only when the two lots touch, or if they're on opposite sides of the right-of-way? I would have to look that up. I would have to look that up. I think it would certainly be worthwhile to have a step back in that situation where you've got the multifamily housing, sort of looking across the street at a single-family house on Park Avenue. I think it certainly makes sense to have a top-level step back in that situation. But that would, like I said, first, it would be a research question to see how adjacency is determined, and if it's not determined the way we want, just add that into the code.
So obviously, I'm asking about, you know, like, the backside of the Broadway. I mean, the folks who live on backside of the Broadway.
Sure.
Have huge shed concerns about any development that is on Park Avenue. So if there is a development on Park Avenue, do we handle the side of the building that abuts the Broadway?
Got it. I'm sorry. So, right, what we've worded in here, I'm sorry, you're asking a different question. I understand now. So I think I understand. So the step-back requirement that staff has proposed only kicks in when you're adjacent to an R district, and of course, the Broadway is in a B district. It's a special exception allowing the multifamily in a commercial zone. The code doesn't currently require any sort of step back based on the adjacent use, only on the adjacent zoning district, but that's certainly something we could bring back. I would think that the two things in play would be, one, that the setback at the ground floor, and then whether there would be a requirement at the top floor as well. On the one hand, certainly when the Broadway was constructed, there was no allowance for these taller buildings in the T zones, so it certainly made sense to build the Broadway where it was. I think the Broadway's, I would have to check, but I would guess the Broadway's fairly close to the rear property line. We would want it, I would, we would get this as part of the public engagement process. The, but one of my concerns is, if you make the setback requirement too stringent for the neighboring property, you could move it into a situation where they can't develop those parcels because there's not enough buildable area. You also create a sort of a possibility of a who-built-first situation. You could imagine sort of two neighboring T zones, and whichever one proceeds to construction first gets to build closer to the lot line, and that's not a good situation either.
Okay. All right, thanks for answering those questions, and that explains to me further why I'd feel like to have a planning commission. Change the T zones as soon as possible, however we call, whether it's a referral or first reading or whatever, it's less important to me than the fact we need a formal process that begins very soon with planning to consider some of these issues. Okay, thank you.
Carolyn?
Yes, I, you know, thank you so much for, I mean, there's work that's been going on on this since June 21st, 2021, almost one year effort on this. And I do support that we add additional opportunities for feedback from the community. I heard what Councilman Snyder said, and I think there's, we've got engagement, and we should continue and listen and collect that feedback through the summer. I do think that, you know, with Mayor Tarter's point around the fact that, I believe, we're probably in recess the last two weeks in August, we're looking at coming back and looking at this in the September timeframe. So, I mean, if, as long as we adjust this timing, I'm comfortable with proceeding a first reading on the assumption that we add more, you know, public listening sessions and make sure that we think about how to net as much input as we can on this and circling back, right, into the fall. I do think August 22nd might not work. The second point on this is that, you know, Paul, I do remember a conversation earlier on this where, you know, hey, I think when we take a look at this from a change management perspective on zoning, you know, we might consider a pilot, which kind of generated Section 25 here, right, around, well, what constitutes the acreage of, that would go through the special use permit? I do want us to make sure that we're not diluting our efforts, right, in this space because we're limiting it to an acre. Like, I look at the reduction in the map from 1% to 3%, and I just want to make sure, you know, for me, that everyone understands my perspective, is that when we pilot this, we do enough of a sample, right, that we can learn from. And if it reduces the opportunities by too much, and this is, you know, 3% to 1% is 66% cut in reduction in opportunity, so I'd ask that perhaps we take a look at Line 24 in the one-acre limitation to see what we can do to expand that, right? And while still honoring the intent of why it was created, which is defining a subset that could go through the special use permit. Does that make sense to my?
Yeah, just to, just to rephrase that and send it back, I think, one, I was hearing a request for a change in the schedule that expands the opportunity or the timeline for public engagement. One, to get more public engagement, and two, it's a practical matter that the council won't be in session on the dates I drafted, so it's just not going to work anyway.
Yeah.
And then the second is to, and I think this is, if I could, I'd sort of marry this up to the comment from Councilmember Snyder, to come back with a better zoning map that demonstrates which parcels would be eligible. My guess is that most of the parcels that would be eligible, the, I think the Broad and Washington frontage is going to knock out more of the acreage than the one-acre limitation. But I think the one-acre limitation, or some size limitation, would be nice to preserve against some sort of larger-scale consolidation, and then a project maybe comes bigger than was anticipated under this code. But staff can certainly prepare a better graphic to demonstrate which parcels would be eligible and which wouldn't, and the ones that aren't. They're approximate sizes, so the council understood, you know, is it sort of a splitting hairs situation where 1.1 acres would have picked up some parcels, but one acre doesn't?
Exactly. Yeah, educating us on, me specifically, would be helpful, right, in terms of what we gain when we, you know, scale, you know, plus or minus 0.1 or 0.2 from the one-acre proposal.
Sure.
To 0.5.
Just to let you know, the methodology on that, we thought at the staff level a couple times about what was a meaningful sort of size, and one of the things we were thinking about was, you know, these T zones being an alternative in housing form to what's otherwise available, right? The T zones today allow for single-family under R1B standards, so if you had a limited number of these lots consolidated, could you allow for some development that's at a higher density and a lower cost per unit than what would otherwise be allowed in single-family development, single-family-style development? And so that was, that led us to the sort of the 30,000 and the 40,000-square-foot range, and then when we spot-checked a few parcels, we thought one acre would make a better number. But certainly, we can run that analysis against everything that's highlighted in the map and bring that back.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, I tell you, I know Debbie's got her hand up, and we're going to go to her in just a moment. I guess I would just say, why don't we try to wrap this conversation up fairly soon, and then we'll take a break, a recess? We know there's a lot to absorb today, and so why don't we go on to Debbie, and with the idea that we're going to hopefully wrap this up pretty soon, and then have a short recess and get back at it? We do have a closed session tonight, so we've got lots left on the plate to keep going. So Debbie?
Great. Well, I will be as succinct as possible, cycling back to my, I was the first to ask the question, it was about taking out Broad and Wash, and I feel like that is pretty restrictive, as we're saying, if you add both of those, we're down to just a couple of parcels that we're changing zoning for, essentially. So I would like it to go to Planning Commission, we've been talking about it for well over a year, I would like to get Planning Commission's perspective on this in conjunction with public comment, of course, but I would like it to be, I'd like to start off broader with Broad and Washington, and then narrow it down if, you know, Planning Commission moves forward with that perspective as well. So I'd like to start with a larger opportunity and have Planning Commission discuss it. So that, I think summarizes what I was trying to say.
Okay. I've got a few comments as well. So, one, A, you've made some progress, Paul, I think you've done a good job synthesizing some of the comments you've heard previously. I would have a few thoughts to share. One, it seems like the purpose of what we're attempting to do here is to increase the amount of housing that is affordable in this community through diversity of housing types, and I'm not sure that's assured by what we're doing. I'm not sure that the changes we're proposing will provide less expensive housing. I just think it may provide more expensive housing we already have. So in other words, you're not necessarily going to get $400,000 condos, you very well could get $1.500 townhouses. Is that what we're seeking here? And maybe that's fine, but I think we need to think about what our goal is and how what we're considering achieves that goal. And I think the only thing that really ties this to affordable housing is this notion that it is a consideration that we saw, and Carol just cautioned us that we can't be more prescriptive than that. So it's sort of an aspiration in our section. What we're doing here, to my mind, does not ensure that we're going to get affordable housing out the other end. It may just be, you know, a bank of six townhouses that, again, sell for $1.500,000 that are abutting single-family houses, and maybe that's okay, but I think if the expectation is this is going to give us a whole lot more affordable housing, I'm not sure as written it does that. So I guess I would just throw that out. Secondly, I would also say, this notion of expanding the areas that this will become available in is going to dilute the strength we have in our special exception process. So, for example, projects major, large areas on Washington or Broad that currently would go through the SE process, if this process has less requirements on them, they will go through this process, they won't go through the special exceptions process. So the things we ask for in our normal SE may not be given to the city. So I think we need to consider that as well. So in other words, school capital contributions, things like that, would those happen in a special exception or special use permit process? I don't know. You know, we've got a defined SE expectation of what we ask for, what we customarily receive. This, to my mind, seeks a process that's more streamlined and lighter. Is that what we want? Do we want to have, you know, two-acre sites on Washington Street that aren't making any school capital contributions, or that aren't making the affordable housing contributions that come with an SE? So I think we need to give some thought before we, you know, make major changes, and I think incremental change is, to my mind, better. I do think we need to further engage with the community. When you own a house, I think there's nothing more important to you, at least as relates to the city, is what occurs around your house, you know, what's the nature of where you live. And we're talking about potentially significant changes, and we've heard from people who view this as a kind of threat to their expectations of the neighborhood, and maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but I think we certainly need to have further engagement with our community about this, particularly those who immediately bought these properties, because it could be a major change to what they've come to expect in their neighborhoods. And lastly, I do think, as I've said previously, that we ought to keep a single-family by-right option, if nothing else, I think, for legal reasons, so that there is a reasonable by-right use permitted. Some of these other things, like a restaurant or whatever's by right, may not be reasonable, and this is sort of more like a constitutional legal question, but I would again throw that out to you, Carol, that it's something I think we should consider. So anyway, I think that we should just always tread lightly when we make significant changes, particularly that allow by-right possibilities, and I think we need to make sure that this process gives us what we're looking for. And at the present, I'm not sure that's assured, so I think we need to sort of flush that out more, and I'd love to hear more from staff about what kind of expectations they believe we can have for what might come with new developments. In other words, compare what happens in a special exception with what will happen with one of these projects. Will we get utility undergrounding? Will we get school capital contributions? Will we get the various things we've come to expect in special exceptions, particularly as relates to projects that would be T projects on major intersections that would be just as big as some of the other projects we've approved? So I'd like to know that, as well as what your expectations would be for what, in the way of community benefits, affordable housing, the like, we can, you know, legally come to expect with these new developments as comparison to a special exception process. So anyway, that's what I've got. Letty, it sounds like you have an additional comment. If you can, let's, you know, wrap it up with that and then take our short break.
Thanks. I just had two quick things in response to Debbie's suggestion. I do worry that we are kind of watering it down a bit, so I do feel like if we could start broad and include the original proposal, which had the Broad and Washington parcels, if it's kind of like budget deliberations where we can start broad and then narrow it down if we need to, I think that option there for the Planning Commission to react to. The second point is, I have to admit that I've actually only read the ZOAC recommendations for the first time this week. It's a 44-page report, and it's over 10 years old, but it actually had a really good description on why they recommended taking out single-family homes as a by-right use in T zones, and so I recommend you look at page 6 and 7 of the ZOAC report, which I thought was a very thoughtful discussion about that, along with lots of other things that they talked about. So it's good reading and good recommendations, and kind of separate tangent, and maybe we should revisit that recommendation, given that a council that was very wise probably put together ZOAC.
Got it. Well, I'm talking about constitutional issues like taking and the like, not necessarily with ZOAC, thanks, but anyway. So why don't we go ahead and take a short recess? It's 9:56. Why don't we try to get back pretty soon after 10 o'clock, maybe, let's say, 5 after 10, and continue on, and we've got our closed session, we've got some budget in the closed session, and try to wrap up? All right, it's 10:05. Are we ready to get back in session? Cindy, is there anything we needed to do?
I just sent Celeste a text. If you can't hear me, we're ready to go.
Cindy had sent me a text saying her audio does work now, so I think she's on. There's, oh, it's not working? Okay. Well, Mayor, we are ready to go, and I think--
The livestream is working.
All right, well, let's get back into it then. So we're ready to come back and reconvene.
And so the next--
So before--
Go ahead. The next item will be with Kieran Bawa and a FY '22 budget request.
All right, Ms. Bawa, when you're done, Ms. Bawa, Mary Beth and I will be reading a disclosure statement.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of the council. We have for discussion today is the last budget amendment for fiscal year 2022. So it includes, first, number, first item is a request to increase Rec. and Parks Department budget by $140,000 for expenditures for more enrollment in classes and camps. This will be supported by additional revenues from such special activities, including the summer camps. The actual collection to date is $230,000 over the budget target, so we are requesting $140,000 of that to be appropriated for the related costs. The second request is related to the proceeds from the sale of the parking lot at Park Place. So of the $1.412 million, the total proceeds, we are requesting an appropriation of $800,000 for purchase and demolish, to purchase and demolish-- for purchase and demolish, to purchase and demolish an unsafe property in Floodway for purpose of Parkland, and then committing the remaining balance of $612,000 to the capital reserves. Next, staff is requesting an appropriation of $100,000 from restricted interest income from 2015, 2016 bond proceeds, and that is for DPW equipment, conversion of existing trucks, so they can be used as plow trucks. And with this, their total purchase of three or four equipment is going to be made whole for the year. So this was the remaining $100,000 that was needed. Next, staff is requesting programming restricted interest income from 2018, 2019, and 2020 bond proceeds to fund projects in the fiscal year '22 CIP, in the last year's CIP. So in lieu of issuing debt, staff is requesting an appropriation of $867,000 to fund three projects, fire station improvements for $550,000, improvements to the fellows park site for $200,000, and park master plan implementation, $117,000. All these three projects, as mentioned, were in the last year's CIP. Then there is a request for interdepartment transfers. And we typically do that towards the end of the year because we're trying to make sure no departments run over the budget. And these have no net impact to the budget. Some of these are very technical. The ARPA bonus, the premium pay and bonuses that were, premium pay that was relocated earlier, we are just reprogramming to different departments just based on what the usage was. The total amounts do not change on those. And making public safety whole for their market adjustment compensation increases they had given by using savings in the jail savings. And then FCC TV, there is a requirement to purchase supplies and fall equipment. So we're making requests using salary savings in the executive management's budget for that. So no net impact there. And then the next item is the school board. At their last meeting, they voted to their current year budget, the fiscal year '22 spending by 3.8 million. And that was using the school's fund balance that they have and grants. So this will have no net impact to the cities. So no transfer from the city's general fund is being requested. This is just so that their appropriation is increased and they're able to spend, increase their budget. The items that they're requesting, the 3.8 million for, include the HVAC replacement for Mary Ellen Henderson. That is partially funded by fund balance and partially by the grant. $300,000 for collective bargaining, legal counsel, textbooks, replacement of teachers' laptops. The other big ones include interactive display boards for preschool, elementary, and middle school classrooms, flooring replacement at Mary Ellen Henderson. So these requests are all one-time in nature since they're using the fund balance, the school's fund balance. And then purchase of electric school bus and transfer to the food services fund. So that's a total of 3.8 million. So moving to Affordable Housing Unit Fund, there is a request before you for transfer of $150,000 to EDA for the rehab and ongoing operating costs of the 310 South Maple Street, Virginia Village property. And this is using previously appropriated ARPA funds for affordable housing initiatives. So no new appropriation is requested here, just a transfer to EDA for reallocating rehab so that they can move the tenants and get the property worked on. And moving along, so in Special Transportation Fund, there is a request for an appropriation of $210,500, and that is for revenue share grant funds that we have expected from Virginia Department of Transportation. They're advanced to fiscal year '22 instead of previous schedule of fiscal year 2025. And this money is going to be for intersection improvements at not Washington Street and Columbia Street. So we're requesting to advance this to this year so the work can start. And finally, for this fund, staff requests an appropriation of $9,725,300. I'm correcting this amount that is in the staff report and will reflect this change in the first reading when it comes next week, based on the information we received today. So this is to recognize the fiscal year 2021 federal and state grant proceeds to be received from VDOT. And this is for the Falls Church Small City Innovation Project, the VTTI, in partnership with Virginia Technology and Transportation Institute, for transportation improvements along the West Falls Church, sorry, West Falls redevelopment area. And then that also includes traffic signals on Broad Street and Washington Streets as part of the bigger project. So this was discussed earlier, I think. So I'm just correcting that amount here, adding $25,300 here to that. So that sums up pretty much all the requested items in this budget amendment. Happy to address any questions that there may be.
All right, thank you. Before we get to questions, Ms. Conley, do you have something you might want to say?
Yes. I make the following statement before City Council's discussion of TO 22-11 relating to the FY 2022 budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Similarly, I make the following statement for City Council's consideration of TO 22-11 relating to the FY 2022 budget. My wife's an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and a former member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate in them fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. All right, let's go on and move to questions or comments. I see Mr. Snyder has his hand up. Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thank you. A couple of questions. The first one is timing. So we're still not certain what will come out of Richmond. And our budget was built on the assumption that we would continue to have the grocery tax. If that doesn't happen, we lose 1.8 million. So I'm a little bit concerned about using, committing to these expenditures without knowing whether Richmond is going to punch a hole in the budget that we just passed. So for me, it's a little bit of timing. I think by and large, the expenditures look pretty reasonable. I would want to know a whole lot more about that real estate that we're purchasing. But, you know, that can come out perhaps on a one-on-one, but I do want to be assured that that's a good expenditure. But I really want to go back to the timing of this. I remain uneasy about what Richmond may do. And if so, we're going to wish we had this money to plug any holes that Richmond creates. So that would be point number one. Point number two, I'd also like a reassessment, and I'd like it on pulled together, the various reserve funds that we have, and what are the assumptions? Because we've got a volatile economic condition right now, and I want to make sure that we're not, you know, we did a significant cut in the tax rate, which we all supported. But as we make these additional expenditures, now I'm a little bit concerned about, have we adequately provided for the eventuality that we could lose significant amounts of tax money as early as the next fiscal year? And shouldn't we make sure that we have an adequate financial cushion to cover that eventuality as well as every other reasonably foreseeable eventuality? So I'd like a comment on that, and again, further discussion.
So, Councilmember Snyder, on the timing, I would like to say that after this, we will be bringing year-end projections to the Budget and Finance Committee on Friday, and then, of course, a budget amendment for any carryforwards or use of those funds. So the revenues, we will have more details on Friday, but the revenues have outperformed the budget targets. We'll have more specifics on Friday when we look at the Budget and Finance Committee. So that's there, and I'll have city managers speak to the purchase of this property in more details, but I did mention, wanted to mention that on the timing. And on the expenditure request that we have in front of you, most of these are one-time in nature. Other than the proceeds from the property, we are pretty much using restricted interest income from bond proceeds or within the budget, making transfers for making departments whole. And so, I mean, that's the comment I wanted to make, just bring it to everybody's attention. A lot of these requests are one-time in nature, so.
Okay. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Maybe the school folks who like to speak this, but Karen on line 60, can you just remind me, did the items that are listed there, were those on the unmet needs list in their budget? Or do you, I find the things look familiar, some don't. Electric school buses look familiar, replacement of teachers' laptops doesn't ring a bell with me, but I'm just wondering, what's the paper trail on these expenses? And is that a chart that totals $2.91 billion drawn from school fund balance? Is that a number that we also discussed and knew during the budget? And if those expenses are incurred, what's the remaining school fund balance? Do we know that?
So yes, they had provided a list earlier, and most of the large items that I'm seeing here were included in those lists. It was not exactly a list that was tied to every single dollar at that time. There were items mentioned that what they needed to address, and now this is the more refined version of that. So I think this is along the lines of that was previously presented. I will need to get back to you on what is their remaining balance. I think it is going to use a big, some of it. They are using $450,000 in the current, next year's budget, so there is definitely that amount in the fund balance that is going to be programmed as part of the adopted budget that we have. So, and there's probably going to be...
So what you're saying, you're saying the minimum that we know that they would have above 2.9 million is 450,000, because they've already budgeted that into the next year. So that would be 3.45 million or so. But that works out to about seven or eight cents on the tax rate, as I estimated. Okay. If you could, all right, if there's information that can be made available to us that the school fund balances after these expenses and after the 450,000, they're already programmed in the budget, I think that would be useful for now.
Yes, we'll do that at the coming Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay. Well, if I happen to miss that, perhaps we could just include it in your next report to the whole group of us.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I had the same question about the school's fund balance. I guess the one B I have is, I think they have a policy around how much they are allowed to keep in fund balance. If you could refresh my memory on what that is as part of Phil's inquiry on what is their fund balance after these appropriations, that'd be great. Also, shared Dave Snyder's question about kind of what the status, I know that we are $12.3 million in capital reserves. Maybe when we see this again, what the total reserves look like? I know that during budget, we had the chart that kind of showed all the different reserves that kind of added up to total available reserves. I think that's a good thing to always stay on top of. A question on why do we have unused bond proceeds? Is it because projects came in cheaper than expected, we delayed certain projects, and then do we still have other unused bond proceeds out there?
Some of these are interests that are on the bond proceeds. So timing, we, these are 2015 and 16 bonds. So if it's sitting in our long-term investment large pool, then it earns some interest. And the interest income that goes with the proceeds is segregated. It's not included as part of the general fund balance proceeds, since these are restricted funds and have to be used for projects that were included or related projects as part of that issuance.
How much is bond proceeds versus interest income?
Sorry, the portion of the bond proceeds is very nominal. I think it's about $84,000 in, or even less collectively. Most of it is all interest income in the $100,000 and the $867. So now the 867 is the larger bonds that were issued in 2018, 19, and 20. So there is interest, and they're drawn down on a schedule, so we don't spend all the proceeds as we get it. So when it's sitting in the bank, it's earning some interest. So that's the interest income that's being programmed to use it for capital projects that are in lieu of issuing debt for those CIP projects.
Got it. I'm less concerned about the interest income. I was just more curious about the unused bond proceeds. That's helpful. And then last question, while really small amounts, I know it's good to have flexibility around the ARPA stuff. It just reminded me that I think we talked about maybe either in the regular council's work session or maybe in budget finance, just checking in on the ARPA allocations and the usage, especially in some areas where I know we're not using everything that we originally thought we might, whether council should be reassessing. So while we're doing these kind of small transfers across departments, in general, we should probably be more diligent on staying on top of $18 million in total on ARPA.
Sure. I think we'll try to incorporate that on a quarterly basis, bring you a reporting on the ARPA expenditures.
That's great. Yeah, I really like the quarterly kind of schedule because it keeps us disciplined and we can look at all the important things on a regular basis. So thank you.
All right. Unless there's anything else, why don't we move on to the next item, Mr. Shields? Thank you, Ms. Bawa, for joining us and for your good work on the budget.
The next item before the closed session is just a review of the future consent items. And rather than going through all of them, maybe we could just ask if there are any questions that council has about any of these items that are on the consent calendar.
Anyone have anything?
I don't have a question, but I was just going to briefly speak to the Arts and Humanities Change. As the liaison to Arts Humanities, they've been working on kind of rechartering themselves. And so what they're proposing is kind of slightly different role than what they had before, kind of taking a more active implementation role, and then also moving to three at-large members. I think they're also kind of an oddball board in that, for example, as the liaison, I was a voting member, which created issues for quorum. And I think there are a couple of other liaison roles that were, ended up being voting members. We're trying to fix that. So I view it as a good cleanup, as well as recharter and giving them a more focused role in kind of promoting Arts and Humanities in the city. Mary Beth's also a member, is the school liaison, so she can chime in if she has any comments.
No, I think it's a very good plan, and I really appreciate your leadership on this with Letty. You have been shepherding it through for a while, and I'm glad we're ready to take this vote, because I think it's a very good plan. Thank you.
All right. Unless there's anything else on the consent agenda, why don't we go ahead and move to go into closed session? And let me pull up the closed session motion. Just give me a moment, I thought I had it on my screen. Let's see here. Hang on just a second, I got a whole lot of emails. Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read this motion. The time is, what time is it now? Is it 10:30, 10:27? Upon a motion made by Councilmember.
Leon.
Seconded by Councilmember.
Conley.
And passed by a vote of City Council. Council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3. Acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of City Council. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
The next dimension or whatever we call it. Celeste, we need a minute just to kind of wait to be taken through the portal.
This is Cindy, and I'm testing on a different microphone. Can you hear me? Celeste is doing the transition to the room breakout.
Mayor, if you could stand by for just a moment, and hopefully we'll get the answer to that question. Hold on.
Everybody ready to go into closed session?
We are.
All right, let me get you guys going.
Okay, I think we're where we're supposed to be now.
No. You're not. Sorry for having a snafu here.
Celeste, I would note that it looks like the only people who are on right now are people who would be in the closed session. So one other approach might just be to make sure that the live stream is down.
No, I've got it. And Cindy, council meeting goes in with you guys, right? Okay, you're going. Bye. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Wyatt, take it away.
I don't think it's happened yet. It's.
It's turning. I see it. It's sending you.
Through the portal.
Cindy, or can Cindy speak now?
Cindy can speak now. Whether you want it or not, I can. I'm just waiting for FCC TV confirming we're live. And Celeste, it looks like we just need our 45 seconds. You should hear us on live stream. If, Celeste, you can confirm that because I don't have live stream up in chambers.
I don't see it yet, but.
Cindy, or can Cindy speak now?
Oh, there we go. We're good, Cindy.
Thank you, Celeste, Mayor. You're good to go.
All right, great. Let's come out of closed session. Upon a motion made by Councilmember.
Leon.
Seconded by Councilmember.
Hardy.
Well, let's go with Hardy. And passed by a vote of City Council. Council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tarter? Yes. All right, it is 10:51. This is our certification. Upon a motion made by Councilmember.
Hiscott.
Seconded by Councilmember.
Conley.
Conley, and passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session. It was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, rehearsed, discussed, or considered in the closed session of meeting by the body. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Tarter? Yes. Okay, so let's go see what else we got here on the agenda. I think not much. Is there anything anyone wants to say before we adjourn? Any comments or scheduling?
Just Snyder, just very quickly. Thanks for public input on the NVTA project and keep the cards and letters coming in. I think, Cindy, what's the cutoff for that?
That would be May 22.
Yep. And thanks particularly, Lady, thanks very much for your efforts to coordinate all that. We have some work to do.
Yeah, Mr. Snyder and I will be having some follow-up conversations.
Okay, any other comments?
Hey, Wyatt, you had floated the Westmoreland parking petition to us. And I know a few of us probably responded to individually. And then I was copied also on some planning commission responses. Can you circle back with us based on what you've heard?
Yeah, I'd be interested in what that is.
I would, okay, I will get back to council in writing on that with just a summary of the comments and then have some further discussions on what we'll do about it. Probably the majority of the comments that I've been got, that I've received have been against having it be resident-only parking on West Westmoreland. Not all, but I think the majority.
Cindy?
I just wanted to note for council's awareness that on Friday, I was working with Congressman Byer's office. And we're putting together with City Clerk's help a event on Monday, the 23rd, at 11:00 next Monday to acknowledge and let him announce the grant awards that we received, the federal grant awards from the community request funds for FY '22. And so that would be the $400,000 in stormwater. That's in the adopted CIP and a new school bus grant for EB. So I just, we'll have more written information tomorrow. But since we're meeting tonight and we just pulled the event timeline together with his calendar to alert council to Monday, 23rd, 11:00 a.m. in front of City Hall. If it rains or bad weather, we'll be inside the lobby.
Is there groundbreaking this week on Thursday?
Yes.
There is. Okay.
Yeah, everyone should have gotten an email invitation for that. But if you haven't, you are invited. And it's at 10 o'clock on Thursday at the Memorial Grove in front of the high school. It's the groundbreaking for the West Falls project.
All right, any final words? Anything else anybody wants to say? Or should we call it a night? All right, let's call it a night. Everyone have a great rest of the week, and we'll see you all soon. Night, everybody.
Good night, council.